All right, we're going to start off the evening with our first nominee for Everyday Hero. I'd like to invite up Tom Arkery, who was nominated by head football coach Tim Shea. Come on up, Tom. And here's what Tim had to say about Tom Arkery. "Tom is a devoted member of the school and the community. He has volunteered his time to this school, PHS, for the better part of his life. He was a product of this community and school system. He is proud of where he comes from, and that is the main reason why he continues to give back. He has been our statistician since he was a student here. He's also a valued tutor and more than willing to give his time to anyone who needs it. Many other adults at PHS feel the same way as I do. I am glad that I've gotten to know Tom, and I enjoy our Thursday conversations about everything Plainville. I can say from personal experience," this is me speaking, "that I see Tom at PHS all the time, and the students love working with him." So I'd like to present Tom Arkery and his nominee, Tim Shea, with the Everyday Hero Award. Congratulations. All right, our second nominee this evening is Stephanie Gagny, who is a middle school of Plainville special education teacher. She was nominated by Gina West, one of our parents. "Mrs. Gagny has been instrumental in the education of our son Andrew West. I remember meeting her and telling her that Andrew is not what it says on paper and test scores. After meeting him and having him in class for two weeks, she knew what I meant. Kids are not defined by IQs and standardized tests. Andrew is who he is not truly, not only because of Plainville schools, but because of teachers like Stephanie Gagny, who truly get to know her kids and have high expectations for all of them. Her personal education for each of these students is amazing and does not go unnoticed. My son Andrew is the person he is today because she honed in on his strengths and has encouraged him to do his best, not only academically but socially. He is a kind soul who cares so much about others, and she fosters that every day in our classroom. He recently had surgery on both of his legs, and she emailed me numerous times to not only check on him, but directly email him. It made him feel loved and cared for, and these days, out of school had been hard for him, and he missed her and the classmates. You have worked so hard with him, Mrs. Gagny, in such individualized ways to help foster what we know is in him. You challenge him, have patience, you differentiate for him, you boost his confidence and self-esteem every day. You teach him what's right from wrong and help him understand what skills he needs in the real world. You teach him everything we love for him to learn. I am grateful that he is doing well, according to the state, for kids like him, but we are more grateful for him playing trumpet, running, learning to talk to adults with confidence, being respectful and responsible, having positive peer interactions, and reading a book, reading fourth to sixth grade books and finishing them. All this happens because you're a phenomenal teacher, and you give your all to every one of your special students, and it shows. Thank you for being such a positive role model in Andrew's life." I'd now like to bring up Stephanie. And that concludes our Everyday Hero presentations. Can I get a motion?
Do we have the SROs?
Oh, you don't have...
The...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped right over that. Sorry about that. Next, we're going to have Chief Catania come up and talk to us about a position that we're looking to add on this budget season for our school resource officer. Sorry, Maureen.
No worries. I would like to thank Chief Catania for coming this evening to speak about his experiences with school resource officers. As the board is aware, we've discussed the proactive and positive natures of this position and the fact that we are the only school district in the region that does not currently have an SRO. The board did agree during our last budget session that hearing from Chief Catania would be helpful in their decision-making process this evening. So I'll turn it over to Chief Catania.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to thank you for inviting me to talk about my experiences with the school resource program over the last 15 years of my time in Simsbury. So I left Simsbury in 2010, and for 15 years I oversaw the program as sergeant, commander patrol, and as the second-in-command at department's captain. I thought I might start with a little bit of information about my background. So in the '90s, we started a school resource officer program in Simsbury, not based on any specific problem or any impetus related to tragedies or anything like that. We thought that we might try to continue our community-oriented policing philosophy along the lines of building connections with the school community. So in our thought process, we were including the school faculty, obviously the student body first, because those were our young citizens, and we wanted to try to reach out to them and make those connections with them that would be lifelong, long-lasting. The school faculty, the parents were especially a big part for us. In what I found over the years of overseeing the SRO program, and what my experience tells me is that this is definitely a logical extension of our community-oriented policing philosophy. For the last seven and a half years, we've been employing a tremendous amount of contact with the community, personalization of the policing, being service-driven, needs-driven department, and I think that shows through our feedback that we're getting in some of the social media, the in-person contact, the phone calls, the voicemails, and the emails that we get. The community is responding to that. I see the SRO program as the next logical extension to that, bringing our services a little bit closer to the students, to the youth of the community. And if I could just go over with you a couple of the concepts that came to mind when I was preparing my notes. And I'm more than happy to share the notes with you, so if the superintendent would like me to put it in an email and send it off to her, and she distributes it. The notes are a little more detailed than what I'll go over here, because I really had hoped that you had some specific questions for me that I could address from an experiential level. So some of the concepts that I found that the school resource officer program created was, I put under title, so I'll hit the title and then I'll give you my background on it. Character building. The SRO program enhances the self-esteem of many students and gives students a sense of worthiness and strength, not dependence. The concept of individual rights is developed and fostered. That whole concept of the police being distanced from the youth. We're very fortunate in this community that we have the kind of community support for the police already, so we're two steps ahead of the game, really, in my way of looking at things. The fact that the school system has tremendous relationships with the youth, it puts us even further ahead of the game. And then we come in with this sort of enhanced presence where we're working with the faculty and working with the students to guide them towards a healthy future and a successful future. That character-building piece is oftentimes understated in a presentation about SRO, but I found it to be very real and very valuable. Community as a whole. The SRO program is a logical extension of community policing philosophy, as I explained to you, and I find that the SRO program seeps out after-school hours well into the families' homes. We got a lot of calls, in my experience, from students who were revealing issues that were going on that we were able to intervene on much earlier than we would have had we waited for that 911 call or that call for service. So that was a tremendous community booster, and I think it really enhanced our community. And I also anticipate very much so that it would work very well here. This community not only has accepted me personally, but I see the interaction with the police every day changing and strengthening. And again, I think that piece with the students would enhance that. The SRO as mentor and role model. I find that many students come to the realization that the police are a positive entity and may serve as role models to them. Some students even decide that they want to become public servants, whether teachers, police officers, firemen, which I obviously think is a worthy pursuit. The public's overall positive feedback of our performance indicates to me that we are a trusted community agency and worthy of the role as mentors and protectors of our town's youth, and I'm speaking to Plainville specifically with that. The SRO as teacher. In my experience, the SRO teaches in the classroom a topic that is integrated in the curriculum trace map. The topic is usually related to the social sciences area of the trace map and often provides a real-world perspective of the intended message. So in my experience in Simsbury, we were teaching in the social science area, and we had a block carved out for us, and the children interacted with us at that level, but that really was just a connection that brought us out into the hallways, into the lunchroom, into the after-school programs, the weekend programs. And then we developed additional programs. One of those programs was the Junior Police Academy. We also did ride-alongs. We did all kinds of character-building exercises with the youths after hours. An unspoken sense of security. The presence of an SRO creates an atmosphere conducive to learning because of an overall improved feeling of safety. I've received feedback from the students, faculty, and parents that have told me personally that they feel safer and more confident just knowing that a uniformed police officer is in the building. I think it's undeniable that when you put a trained police officer in the building and they are prepared to react to whatever crisis may take place in the school. I think that is a quiet, unspoken reassurance to the children and to the faculty and to the parents at home, who aren't in the schools, but they have that sense of security that a uniformed police officer is here. The SRO as a problem solver. The SRO may observe behavioral problems and redirect our youth in a positive direction. The SRO can counsel students and create a plan to overcome a problem before it gets out of hand. Once the plan is created with the student, thereby giving the student an option for a better outcome, we may very well be on our way to a better future of good decision-making on that student's part. So if we can inculcate in the student's mind, there is a path to success. We can figure out how to get through a problem. It's not the end of the world. You're not down a rabbit hole and you can't come out. If we can help kids see that through the lens of a police officer, which ultimately they see us as a law enforcer. The cops are going to give you a ticket, the cops are going to arrest you if we're doing something wrong. The cops are, you know, there for the negative punitive aspect of it. I think when we present in the schools, we create those relationships that really speak to a trust bond that you can't really create during the ticket writing or the arrest process, but you can in those preemptive stages where you're trying to help a person see a way through a problem. My next topic was trust building. SRO enhances trust between students, the police, the faculty during the school hours, but also outside of the school. The program enhances cooperation between the police and community, and results are seen largely in matters related to either crime prevention or crime solve. And that goes back to what I said earlier in my opening. We found that a lot of information was given to us very freely and very casually that sort of tipped the hand to where the trouble might be, and we were able to work our way in without betraying the trust of the child, without betraying the trust of faculty. There's a lot of give and take that goes into this relationship. And one of the things that I wanted to mention to all of you is that the board of ed, the faculty, whoever the superintendent assigns, or however your hierarchy works, has to be involved with me on my end on the administrative side of policing, even in the process of even selecting a school resource officer. It's essential that we hand-pick that person. It is never a brand-new officer, and I shouldn't say never, because if we were to hire a certified officer who had this kind of experience with an excellent track record, of course, we can use their talents. That's not likely. But I will say that I've already identified in our agency at least a half a dozen different officers that I think have the experience and the skills, the patience and the temperant tolerant attitude to be able to do this type of work successfully. The SRO as protector and guardian. Although the school resource officer program is designed by the National Association of School Resource Officers, which is NASRO, which is the curriculum and training that I have experience with and which I would be recommending, NASRO never intended the school resource officer to be solely a security officer, but it's indisputable that the uniformed police officer in the school is ready to respond. So without going into detail on that aspect of it, we know that there are bad people in society, and we know that the schools have been hit with some very heinous acts, criminal acts. That officer in the school acts as a deterrent and is completely prepared and equipped and ready to respond to that issue. So although it's not a primary function, it's indisputable that it's there and can function in that capacity. Those are just a few of the highlights that I wanted to present to you, and I was really interested in your questions, and I was hoping that after talking to Andrew and talking to the chairwoman from the council and superintendent that you might have some questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
I do.
Yes, she pushed it. You're good.
You said that you've kind of went through your staff, and there's about a half a dozen people that you think could do the job. If you send one of them here, are you going to have to hire someone to replace them within your force?
Yes. Yes, our intention would be that we would assign an officer to the school resource officer program and backfill that opening. I have to tell you that at the level of service we deliver in town, our department is right at a workable level. I mean, I definitely am going to work towards expanding the department throughout the years. We are catching up on calls for service that we should have really been prepared for years now, but to be quite honest with you, it's a very slow process to train an officer. So an officer takes roughly 38 weeks to get them from hiring, well, I shouldn't say that, it's even longer than 38 weeks, from the time we put them in the academy to the time that we put them on the road as a certified officer. That's not through my choosing, that's through the state of Connecticut's laws and policies that we must adhere to. It's not optional. So it's not anyone's fault that we don't have enough people to just assign one person here, it's just a matter of circumstances. We're doing roughly 24,000 calls for service a year. You know, anyone interested in those stats is welcome to them, because I'm very proud of the work that the men and women do in the department. And that's not just the sworn officers, that's our records people, that's our dispatching people. So there's a lot of work that we're already incurring. We would definitely backfill it.
Any other questions?
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Is there anything, and I don't know if you can answer this directly or not, but is there anything that keeps you up at night and really makes you think that this school needs an SRO?
Well, that's an excellent question. The way you posed it really puts me into a corner and...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I like it. To be quite honest with you, I wouldn't couch it under keeps me up at night, but we have seen that across this nation, there's plenty of reason why we need to be, the police need to be interacting with the youth at an early stage in their developmental process. So in Simsbury, I started the program off by recommending we were in the high school, which is the same thing I would recommend here, and then eventually I moved into the middle school to get those younger-aged students who, just before they got to the high school environment, lifestyle, if you will. So, you know, what keeps me up at night is not having enough time to really address all of these issues efficiently. I'm driven, and the people who work for me are driven, to do a good job for all of you. So if there's anything that really keeps me up at night is I just don't have enough time to really effectively address all of the needs of the community, at least not to meet my own expectations. But as far as any specific problem within the schools that would warrant a school resource officer, I would say no, because if we look at it through the lens of something here needs a school resource officer, most likely we're mistaking the school resource officer program as a security guard, and it is not a security guard. It is more along the lines of relationship building and creating a healthy atmosphere for future endeavors. Selfishly, it helps me with the community at large, but to be specific, that relationship in the school you'll see change for the positive as well, because the interaction with youth and the faculty will be enhanced. My experience has been the relationships become stronger and better, because now you've got an option to be able to talk with a uniformed police officer, somebody that can make decisions under the color of law, instantaneously. It's kind of like you have your person, the youth have a personal police officer to go to. Now, some youths won't want to take advantage of that, but they'll still have the faculty that maybe they trust or confide in, so we've given them another option, and we've given them a broader range of solutions. I hope that answered that.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Chief, excuse me. Currently, now, how many SROs are there in the Simsbury school?
I believe they're using two. One for sure. I think what happens is sometimes you get reassignments, sometimes through assignment changes or promotions. They may lose one, or one may need to be trained. There's an extensive training process to it, so right now I know that they definitely have the one officer. I think they're slated for two, one in middle school, one in high school.
Would this officer during non-school time also be assuming other duties with the Plainville Police Department?
Yeah, that's completely possible. One of the things that's interesting about the split role of the school resource officers, they are assigned to the school full-time. And what we try to do is we try to, because the officers are unionized employees, that's one of the pieces of the puzzle we fill in. We talk with the officer, and we say, "Look, we'd like you to follow the school schedule." Right? So when you're on vacation, they could take time off. If they want to pick up overtime, let's say for traffic enforcement, or maybe we have a special duty operation or whatever, they can do that, but the school is first. So summer is a prime example of this. What we did in Simsbury was we developed programming that they could participate in. But mostly what we find is if the officer's following the school's schedule and they're using their vacation time accordingly, there's very little time that I have to really fill in with anything. And if all of you come up with programming during the summer months or during, you know, some special after-school event or whatever, we'd want to make that officer available to you as well. But it does bring up a good point that this is a sworn police officer who operates under statutory authority, who answers to the hierarchy of the police department, but is assigned to all of you and has to also answer to the hierarchy of the school system. So you need that special person who can split, you know, the mission, so to speak, and be able to work under your direction at the school level, but also keep in the back of their mind that they have state statutes and a police policy and a police hierarchy that has certain expectations that they have to follow.
Thank you.
Just thank you for coming, Chief. Really appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Just wondering, in your experience, you can talk to the effect that SRO might have in a building for the faculty that's in the building?
Well, what I've found through personal experiences, the faculty at first, it's a little tenuous. You know, what's the officer going to be doing? Where are they going to be stationed out of? Do they have an office in the building? So all of those logistical pieces that are sort of a little uncomfortable, I would say, at first, because no one really knows how this program works until you're actually immersed into it. But basically, over the time, and I think for the first SRO that I assigned, that I had responsibility for assigning, it was about, I'd say, three months before there was a comfort level there where they recognized that this isn't an officer in the school who's just seeking out drugs. We're not ripping open lockers, we're not, you know, trying to find every infraction or every misdemeanor or problem in the building. Once I think that comfort level is established, and it's about well-being and about thinking towards successful futures for the kids, I think the relationship with the faculty becomes very, very healthy, very, very free-flowing. There's, you know, the officer can eat lunch. Again, this is driven mostly by all of you. I don't intervene on those decision-making processes, so if the superintendent or the powers-to-be, the principal of the high school, wants the officer to have lunch in the cafeteria, we do that. If they feel that that's awkward, or that that's not impactful in some way, or that's detrimental in some way, we don't do that. So those are those kind of in-house things that we flesh out for the first three months, and then after that, once it becomes customary, the relationships start forming with the faculty. And what I've found also is the faculty will confide in the officer, because basically you have a cop right on the spot who you could say, "What do you make of this? What do you think of this? What if I had a student in, you know, the proverbial theoretical example, what if I had a student that comes to school every day and reeks of marijuana?" And then the conversation is developed, and the officer is trained, not, he's not look, he or she's not looking for the answers as to who the student is. What he or she is doing is saying, "Well, let's take a look at it from a performance point of view. What's their grades like? What, you know, what are they doing after school? Who are their friends?" That type of thing. So I think the relationship takes a little while to get off the ground, but I think the learning curve is very quick and easy for us.
Thank you.
Have you, of the districts you know around us that have SROs, has there ever been a program that hasn't worked out?
Not that I know of, Ms. Saunders. I'm not familiar with the programs that don't succeed. There may be some out there. I think like anything else, if you did a Google search on whether SRO programs work or don't work, here's what my research has revealed in the past in a little bit of brush-up. Now, I presented for this position years ago, and we were very close to getting it, and then it didn't go through. But my current research, after reading several positional papers from the West Coast, has been negativity about SRO programs involved where there is a large population of marginalized students. Again, I think when you look at the demographic of our town, you look at the relationships with teachers and students, you look at the success rate of the schools. You know, I go to these meetings where I see the kids very, very healthy and respectful and courteous. I get the feedback from the schools. We have very minor problems here. So I don't think we have a large population, and all of you will know better than me, but from my review of the school system here, I, my children went through, I'm the father of four children, they went through the Avon school system, and I say this very proudly and very openly, and I say this to every Avon teacher I can. I have family who are in the hierarchy of the Avon school system. I think the Plainville school system is every bit as good, if not better, than the school system my kids went through, and I would have been very proud to send my kids to this school system, from the cleanliness of the buildings to the quality of the teachers and just the nature of being down-to-earth and creating good citizens. I mean, that's important to me as a police officer, because we're trying to live in a free society and live peacefully and live with a sense of security that we can go home at night and put our heads on the pillow and rest easy. I think all of you make a tremendous impact on that, and I would like to think that that's what a good part of our mission is too, is developing good citizens. So as far as programs not working out, I'm sure you're going to find them. If you do a Google search on it, I'm sure there's places out there. I'm not familiar with any off the top of my head, nor do I think that it would ever fail in an environment like this, because I think we have both children, and parents especially, and school faculty, of course, that would want to see it succeed. So I see it as definitely being able to succeed here.
Thank you. I actually have one. So what's like the protocol? So they're here in our schools, I'm not familiar with them. So a situation arises, and you know how right now, if we have a situation, say, a kid's computer is stolen, and the police have to come in and talk to witnesses or whatever. All right, there's a very specific procedure and policy we follow to make sure that the kids have their parents there, if that's what they want. How does that work now when you have an officer full-time every day in the schools?
Well, the officer still has to follow constitutional law, has to follow state statute, has to follow your in-house policies for the school resource officer. Now, remember, this program is inside and outside of the school, whether, you know, whether we, you know, anticipate that or not. I want to say to you that the program spills out outside of the school, so you'll find that some of the students will say, "Could I talk to Officer Such-and-Such, our school resource officer?" So it develops that relationship that, there's a little bit of tension with that, because the school resource officer has to stay in here and not be the investigating officer on some cases. So it's not always going to be the school resource officer that investigates something. In the case of the stolen computer, the school resource officer could take that case. But if something spills out into a larger-scale, God forbid, criminal act, a patrol officer responds to here, just like they normally would. We can't really, I'll use the word compromise, but with a caveat. We can't really use the school resource officer to do all of that kind of work in the school and still build trust. You have to keep the distance from that regular day-to-day patrol function. And quite honestly, the school resource officer is creating more work for the patrol district, because the school resource officer will be reaching out to the patrol district and say, "There's cars in the fire lane." Because remember, that officer's doing other things. He has other, he or she has other assigned tasks. So you're still going to see the patrol officer. The parents are still going to ask, "Why is there a cruiser in front of the school?" And that may be the SRO's cruiser. But as things become more familiar with everyone... that may be the SRO's cruiser. But as things become more familiar with everyone involved, that'll, that'll lessen. I, could I go out on a limb here and, and suggest that you're, you're getting at the point that, you know, who's going to do the patrol work inside the building? Is that what you're talking about, Ms. Saunders?
No, no. I'm just wondering about the interaction of this police officer with the children. Because, you know, right now, police officers, they're not allowed to just come in and talk to the kids. So that relationship kind of changes if we have one in the, you know?
Well, yes and no. I mean, as, as a counselor, as, as someone that the kids are confiding in, right? Uh, that's a voluntary thing. One of the things that is intriguing to me is that, uh, and, and we talk about this very openly and freely, but it, but there's always a sticking point with that relationship where the police have to advise a parent if the child is a suspect in a criminal act. So if the child comes up to me in the hallway and just wants to say to me, "Hey, I think, uh, you know, John Jones brought a gun to school," then we don't need a parent to listen to that. And we shouldn't. And you should not want us to because time is of the essence and public safety is the primary function of the police officer at that point. So that officer has to know how to employ that. I, I did not see any problems with that in my experience with the SRO program. I mean, obviously, we'd be taking feedback from all of you, all of the faculty, really, the, the people on the spot to keep us, you know, in alignment with what the needs are for that. But I, I don't foresee that as being an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So you just mentioned that some parents might ask why there's a cruiser in front of the high school. Can you hear me better? Um, some parents might ask why there's not a cru, why there is a cruiser in front of the high school. Um, how do you work it with parents who aren't familiar with this and all of a sudden, there's a cop in the school and they think that there's something wrong within the school and, you know, they're worried for their children because they don't understand what the program is?
Well, there'll be a marketing strategy to this. Hopefully, if all of us come to an agreement that this is what the townspeople, the citizenry, the parents, the faculty, the Board of Ed wants to do, there'll be a marketing effect to this. So we'll get the information out as far as what the goals and objectives are of a school resource officer and why the Board of Ed, the town decided to go this way. So that's, that's the initial, in, in my way of looking at things, that's the initial thrust to making it known. And with the, you know, social media and everything else being as, you know, widespread as it is in all of our communities, we could get that message out very easily. But then there's also the avenue of approach that we have a very transparent and open policy at the police department. People call me regularly. They'll stop at the station and ask to speak with me. If they came to the station or called me on the phone and asked me, "What's the police, what's the police car doing in front of the high school?" We would tell them. Uh, we do the same thing if, God forbid, there's a need to have us here for a, a disturbance in the cafeteria. Somebody will call me and say, "Why is there four police cruisers at the high school?" And we, we simply tell them, "Because we had a minor incident there that we were taking care of. Uh, there's nothing to be concerned about." Now, my word is my bond. So I mean, when I tell people this, that is what is going on. So, uh, you know, I just found that that's the best policy for us, to, to just be open about it. Uh, there's no smoke and mirrors. I, I was talking to the Chairwoman of the Council just recently and I was talking to her about a question about, "Why are there so many cruisers in and out of Norton Park?" Because you want us there. Because we're deterring crime, because we're stopping and talking with citizens, because we're doing what we're paid to do. That's not a negative thing. And for those who think that the presence of a police officer is negative, I enjoy having those conversations with them because there's a need for that interaction. There's a need for that, um, crime prevention or that, what we call omnipresence, that we're, we're everywhere and we're, it's unpredictable where you might find us. That's, that's a necessity. So the school, the school system is the same thing. We're here. In and of itself, us being here would be a deterrent for someone taking advantage of the school. So again, I, I think when people start looking at it through that lens, even the staunchest opponents to the police, when it comes to their children, tend to look at our presence as being a positive. Because they know that we're here to protect their kids.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank you in general for what you do and for what, for what all of your, um, police officers do. You do a good job and I appreciate it.
Thank you. So does I have a, I have a quick closing, if you don't mind?
I'm sorry?
I have a quick closing, if you don't mind?
Oh, God.
Just a few notes. Okay. So in closing, I'd like to acknowledge that I realize that cost is a factor, especially at this time of economic crisis in the state and the impact on local taxes. However, I would submit that during times of economic crisis, stress is sometimes manifested in our behaviors. The stress trickles down to our children. We see this in our day-to-day lives. Police officers see the effects of the stress that lead to the financial crimes and the domestic violence we investigate. So I know that, I knew coming into this that, especially at this point in time, that there would be a tremendous amount of pressure on all of you because of the impact of economics. But I, but I really do believe this, and I wouldn't say this just because I'm fishing for more work. I think that during times of stress, this is probably the best time. If we're going to wait for the perfect economic time to employ this, that may never come. But what I think you need to see is through the eyes of a police officer, that during times of economic stress, there's a lot more calls for the police for service. And a lot of that trickles down on the kids in the home. And then those kids come to your schools and all of you are teaching them and educating them and mentoring them. And there's a lot going on behind the scenes. I think we could help with that. And I think that this may be, uh, this may be coming at a really good time if you're serious about considering this. I think this is a good time to really take a serious look at it. All right. And I thank you for your time and I really appreciate you having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
If I may now invite Athletic Director Chris Farrell to speak to the board tonight before their final deliberations. As the board's aware, Mr. Farrell carefully reduced other areas of his budget so that he could reinstate indoor track with no increase to the athletic budget. He will describe the benefits to our student athletes. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me in here tonight. Um, Mr. Farrell, Athletic Director of Plainville Public Schools. Just going to go over a couple of slides that I do have. They prepared for everyone here tonight, just to kind of discuss where the indoor track proposal came from and where, you know, why we feel it's, it's an important need for our, um, our athletic program. So if you go to the first slide, last year when I was named the Athletic Director at, uh, for Plainville Public Schools, I was tasked by Dr. Brummett and also Mr. Medick, our Building Principal, to really look at and, and really evaluate our programs, all of our athletic programs, our processes, how we do things. Um, I had an open-door policy with all of our student athletes, our parents. I had sat down and met with every single one of our coaches. And something that, that kept popping back up was indoor track. Um, I had parents come and meet with me, you know, a number of different times, whether they pulled me aside at a game or set up a meeting and, and came into my office. Um, when I was up at the main office, I had, you know, parents do come, you know, came in and, and discussed how, you know, they really would like to see indoor track back at the high school. If you look at, at some of the, the points here, um, in the CCC, the Central Connecticut Conference that we are in, we are the only team, um, sorry, the only school that does not have indoor track. So there's 30 other high schools in our conference that do have it. We also, last year, with having such a overwhelming, a number of students and, and parents coming to me and discussing indoor track, I looked into the Team of One option. And that is something we currently started last year at Plainville. Um, the C I A C says you can do a Team of One in certain sports, as in wrestling, swimming, track, golf, all the individual sports. So we were able to link up with, in agreement with Bristol Eastern, and send students over as a Team of One. I know it's kind of confusing, but what ends up happening is you can have up to three students participate. So last year, we had two. This year, we have three. Um, one actually just finished second overall in the state and will be competing in the Opens next week, um, which we're very excited for. Um, you know, he will be wearing his Plainville uniform. He, he competes for Plainville High School, but it is a Team of Three. Um, indoor, indoor track's also one of the most cost-effective athletic programs. We already have all the uniforms, all the equipment. Nothing changes. The, the biggest thing, and we'll discuss that in a second, is obviously salaries and transportation to and from meets. Because we practice here, you know, it does not change. Last year, our coaches did a fabulous job of getting more students out for, um, track. The numbers have been growing over the years. So in our outdoor program, we had over 100 students, that's boys and girls, participating in, in outdoor track. And then in the fall, this last past fall, we had over 40 students, boys and girls, with our cross-country program. Indoor track allows for continuation from cross-country to outdoor track. The biggest, you know, the other thing is, I know we talk about, it's just, you know, track athletes. This helps all of our programs here at the high school from, you know, some of the, the programs that, that take place in, in the fall, whether it's football, whether it's volleyball. And they're continuing on with participation, you know, in training to make themselves, um, better athletes, better student athletes. Um, in the winter, and then if they choose to, you know, they play baseball or softball, or they do outdoor track, or they're a golf, um, they're a golfer, they're, they're a tennis player, they're actually being active during the winter. So if you go into the next slide, um, you know, obviously knowing that, you know, budgets are tight and are from CM, our Business Manager, he made it very clear to us that we need to make sure that, you know, we weren't looking for much of an increase. They wanted us to, you know, really evaluate every part of our budget. And I went through line for line and, and kind of went through it. And I felt very strongly, just by having conversations with our student athletes and obviously parents and our coaches, that this is something we did need to add. So if you look, this is where, and this is obviously, the numbers come from the contract, the teacher contract, transportation would be about $2,000. And that's just how I budget, looking at how much, on average, a, a bus trip would, would cost. And then dues and fees, you have to pay into the, the C I A C, um, the Connecticut, um, Organization, State Organization for Athletics. You have to pay dues and fees for, you know, state meets. You have to pay dues and fees for, you know, um, different invitationals. So that, that is kind of where you would, you would see that number. So I was able to offset all costs by reducing, I had to go through and get, like I said, get creative. We had to push away no uniform purchases for next year. So there is a uniform cycle that, that is in place. So there are teams, and I spoke with coaches, that if we did go ahead and do this, that their, their uniform purchases would be bumped one year. We'd also reduce, um, the, the amount of allowed scrimmages at our varsity programs here at the high school. And they also understand that as well. And then reducing, you know, some of the games at the middle school, a lot of, um, a lot of the teams that we are playing are doing a 10-game schedule, not a 12 to 16-game schedule. So everyone's kind of going to around, you know, with the budgets being the way, it's still 10. So I was able to go and actually add indoor track, um, you know, numbers-wise, without having to increase at all to the athletic budget. So I was coming in at, actually a little below the, what I did, um, last year. If you go to the next slide, which I think is something that's very important, it, um, this is the numbers for our winter athletics. So we have Family ID, which, you know, puts it all together for us. It's our, our login. So if you look at the numbers, it goes all the way. Any student athlete here at the high school has to go and sign up. These numbers are on the higher end. We have had students that have, um, left their sport they participated in. We've got also students that, you know, decided that it wasn't for them. They might have been cut because the winter season, we do make cuts. So the boys' basketball number and girls' basketball number is a little bit higher than it really is. But if you look at that, we have 706 students, um, in our school. If you do the math, it's about just under 20% of our student athletes at Plainville High School are participating in a sport in the winter. Um, that has a lot to do with, you know, the specialties of the sports. If you are, haven't played basketball, if you haven't swam before, you haven't wrestled, it is very hard to just pick that up in high school and get in, and get involved in it. Um, I'm not taking away from any of the other sports. The coaches all understand this as well. The basketball coach, both coaches, the swim coach, they understand it. This is something, those sports are specialty areas in the winter. So when you're, you're going in and you aren't that, you haven't been subjected to that sport, it's very tough for you, you're going to have a lot of, you know, a lot of tough times trying to participate in that sport. We do have plenty of athletes that come in, they try for the first time, they do great, but it, it can be frustrating. We're now giving them another avenue to go and participate in, in a, um, in a activity where weight training is important, their cardiovascular endurance is important, and they're working on, you know, work, um, staying in shape or, you know, providing a, um, a better chance for an opportunity in the spring with their an outdoor track athlete. So, you know, being that, in the fall, we had about, yeah, not about, it was 43% participation rate, which is excellent. When I first got here, I'd been here since 2005, but as the Athletic Director, our participation rate was below 30% overall. And that's been one of my goals. And I've been working with Dr. Brummett and Mr. Medick about improving participation. We all understand what athletics do to our student athletes as far as discipline, being part of a team, and obviously having, you know, positive role models with our student athletes on a daily basis and, and have them, them have something safe and activity to do after school. So with that being said, you know, the participation rate in the winter always will drop. It's how it is. Indoor track will obviously increase that. You know, there is, I, I am very confident to say that we'd have about 50 student athletes doing indoor track if it was instituted next year. And if you look at the numbers compared, you can add them up, you know, and you can add programs together and you're still going to service more student athletes for, um, indoor track. So, you know, like I said, I just want to leave you with the, the participation, um, numbers. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, you did say that currently, three athletes now are able to participate, but there are approximately 50 who would be able to participate.
I'd over, I'd over 20 students approached me. Um, I think that what happens is, we, we don't publicize the Team of One because then it turns into, you know, oh, we have to make cuts and do that kind of thing. So we do, on a first-come, first-served basis, you know, some of the parents were aware of this when I met with them last year, that this is, was a possibility. So they were very diligent and, and got a hold of me right away. So we were able to have that. Obviously, two of them are seniors and one was a junior. So we went by seniority first. And, and that's the way. There are students that were on the waiting list. But once they participate, once one of those athletes participated in a meet, that was our spot. So we were only allowed three. So yes, Foster, that, that's how that works.
And we do have one who is now qualified for the States.
Um, actually, we had one gentleman qualified for three activities, um, three, three different events. He participated, did a great job, actually had a couple of personal records. We have another, um, another one of our student athletes that will be moving on to the Opens. He's ranked second right now. And he, as long as he finishes top six in the state, he will then go on to Nationals in New York City.
And they are also going to be competing as spring track athletes?
Yes, absolutely. All, all that way back. So we scored, we finished 12th in Class M as an, uh, outdoor track team with three student, or actually, sorry, two, because the other student athlete did not qualify. So we finished 12th overall in Class M with just two student athletes participating. So it would be a very competitive, um, you know, activity for us to, you know, be involved in.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a question. So I understand, I've been on the board almost nine years, and that the indoor track team was way before that?
Mm-hmm.
And it was cut?
Yeah. So when I got here in 2005, it was, it was in place. I know that there were some budget cuts. Like I said, I can't tell you exactly the year, 2007 or 2008, you know, because I was obviously a teacher here and I was, I was coaching baseball as well. So we did have a lot of student athletes. The track program was between 50 and 60 student athletes at that time. Um, I do know that there are teachers and coaches in the, in the audience as well that were coaches at the time. But we did have it and it was cut along with cheerleading at that time due to, you know, budget reasons.
So my question is, if that was over nine years ago, have there been interests like this every year? And why is it now? And why hasn't it, because I, since I've been on the board, I've never heard anybody talk about an indoor track team.
I mean, I can speak to you as, obviously-
It's never been brought up. So I'm wondering why this year, why now? And why hasn't it been brought up over the past 10 years?
I mean, I can speak to you as a football coach. When I was the football coach, I always pushed it every time we had meetings. Because we do have a lot of student athletes that were not doing something in, in the winter. You know, where they can actually continue on with their weightlifting program, they're actually conditioning outside. So that was something that we weren't, it wasn't able to go, you know, my coaches would come to me now. They know if they have an issue or they want to bring something up, they come in and do that. I did the same thing with the Athletic Director when, you know, I was the coach. And then obviously, we, we can try to continue to do it. I can't speak to why the Athletic Directors at that time didn't think it was important. But I am listening to the parents. I am listening to my coaches and saying that, you know, this is something that we do need. Because there, there always was. It was always participation. The numbers were always great. And obviously, it helps our athletic program as a whole. But I know that's something I did try to push when I was a coach, last year as the Athletic Director. I'm, I'm not even kidding. I think that was my first four phone calls were, were indoor track. Um, and I, my second meeting as Athletic Director was indoor track. The first one was an interesting one, but, um, the second one was definitely indoor track.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I just have a question, just basically, because I don't know. For kids that don't do any sports in the wintertime, do they have access to the pool? Do they have access to things within the school that they could train?
So they don't have access to the pool because obviously, unless they're with the rec department. Because the pool, I, we have our, our swim team that's in the, in the pool during the winter, our boy swim team. And then obviously, liability, having lifeguards and someone there. They do have access to the weight room, um, for an hour, three days a week. Um, we have seen a little bit increase in that. We, where we tend to see more is, our soccer team is up there, boy soccer team, they have about, you know, 15 people up there every day. Um, we've seen different, um, sports that are getting ready now for spring. You see more track athletes starting to go out and work out up there. Um, so it is getting a little bit, you know, packed up there. Um, but, you know, we do have hired, you know, professionals that are, are working up there. But they've done a great job of really making sure that they do have that, that available. But other than that, I mean, we don't have open gym time. We do have, we have three levels of basketball for boys, two for girls, and we also have cheerleading. So it's impossible for us to have open gym. There's no way you can have open gym in the wintertime.
Um, one other thing that just popped in my head. Um, I know when I was in school, we had clubs. We had a running club. Now, frankly, I don't know why anyone would want to run for, but, um, is, is that an option to have like a club? Where, you know, like a winter club for running?
I mean, we have student athletes that run on a daily basis. And I, same thing, I look at them, I say, "Wow," you know, it's not, it's not a lot of them. Um, I will tell you though, when it's a club, it's not taken serious. People aren't showing up. Um, I know that's actually one of our student athletes that is competing as a team on a Bristol Eastern. That's what he was doing in the offseason, was, was participating in a club sport at, you know, off-site, so that he was able to do that. It is very difficult, you know, to start a club. Um, I shouldn't say very difficult to start a club, but to keep the interest up in there. The student athletes want to be at the meets. They want to be able to compete against, you know, athletes from other schools. They want to be able to say, "Hey, I'm first, I'm second, I'm third. This is my seed. I have an opportunity to go to States and obviously compete, you know, further than that." So, you know, always an opportunity to have, you know, a, a club sport, you know, a club and try to do something. We still have to pay stipends, you know, for, you know, the, the coordinators to, to go and, and put that on. But, you know, it, it is a possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming.
No problem.
Thank you.
Just want to thank Mr. Farrell for speaking to the indoor track again, and I will speak to the summary of the budget during my report later in the meeting. I want to assure the public present this evening that while the budget does include some reductions, it still supports a strong instructional core with reasonable class sizes. And I'm glad to see so many members of the parent and communities here this evening. Thank you, Chairman Saunders.
All right, now to the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chairman, I've moved that we approve the five minutes that are on the, of our prior meetings, that would be the minutes A, B through E, unless there are any corrections.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next word to the citizens' comments portion of our meeting, since I assume there are a lot of you here that want to speak. Certainly feel free, you guys can line up over there, just when you get up to the podium, state your name and your address. And I'd like to thank you all for coming to speak to us this evening.
I've been a little over this quite a bit, but, hi, I'm Barb Seany. I live at 92 Ledge Road, Plainville, Connecticut. I actually, very thankful for you having this meeting tonight. My son, John Seany, is one of the members participating in the Bristol Track this year. He was the one that got, participated in the three meets. He qualified for the Class M this past Friday in three different individual programs. He's a junior, so definitely looking forward to participating in indoor track next year. As I was talking, listening to Mr. Farrell talk and some of the questions that you asked really sparked with me, because I have to share with you, when John started running track in middle school, which he's also a varsity player on soccer as well, and loves to run track. When we first joined middle school, he very much enjoyed it. We came to high school, we wanted an indoor track program. Full disclosure, when I approached the athletic director, which was not Chris at the time, we were told that that was not going to be an option for Plainville. So we went to a club team for John to continue running and conditioning in between his two sports, outdoor track and soccer. Club sports are great, he met a lot of kids, he was able to excel. The problem with the track, the club teams that we ran into is you cannot represent a high school when you run with a club team. He wants to represent Plainville when he runs. He couldn't run in the high school meets. He couldn't compete with high school students where his competition was. So he could go to different meets, yeah, we went to New York, he had a great time, met a lot of kids. The club team we joined, closest one was out of Hartford, so that's where he was. So again, not able to compete with high school students his age, wasn't able to, I think, excel like he wanted to, because most of the kids his age were with high school teams, and he wasn't. As far as the conditioning, and I think what indoor track would offer students, and we all think about what it is, what's best for the students, is not just the conditioning, and I think the ability for students and athletes of all levels to participate in track, because I think it's one of the few sports that you can be at all different levels. You don't have to be a superstar to participate in track. You can participate in sprints, running, jumping, whatever. But I have seen as a parent in the years that I'm involved in it, and yes, I'm a soccer mom as well for two kids, track is probably the one sport that I see a variety of all kids, of all levels, that come together as a team, and they feel like they're part of a team. And me personally, and I know a lot of folks that I've talked to, when I heard you guys were having this meeting here, they're like, wow, this is great, because my kids don't have anything to do in the winter. And I said, I know, this is great. I said, John practices on own, he trains five hours a day on his own because he wants to keep up with this. Well, Coach Farrell, Mr. Farrell was able to do for us this year, I can't thank him enough. It was a wonderful experience, and I hope, and I really do hope you guys take this into account, of how much this would be offering our students, not just the high school students, the middle school kids come in who love to do this. It's been an amazing experience for us participating in Bristol. I am so grateful we had the opportunity to do that, but we would love to have it here in Plainville. Either way, we look forward to representing Plainville next year in indoor track. That's what we want to do. John's gonna continue in his senior year as well, but we'd love to have it here at the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
You can lift it up if you need to.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
My name is Bethel Hairston, and I live at 4 Maxine Road. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you and express my gratitude for the Board of Ed and all that you stand for and all that you do, excuse me, here in Plainville. Very happy to be a resident here and have my kids attend the, the school. I'm here representing Tofflon Elementary School with my fellow PTO and fellow parents, but I just wanted to express my gratitude first and say thank you for all that you do. And second, I have two boys, first grade and third grade, and we are here to represent the wellness program that is potentially going to be cut, and wanted to just express how important it is to us, our children, and as a community at Tofflon, as for all the, the elementary schools, but I can only speak for Tofflon because that is my experience. And it is just a huge part of my boys' day. When they come home, I always ask them what their favorite part of the day is. Wellness program always comes up. My first grader, when I ask him what, what is his favorite part about wellness program, as a first grader, he says it's so he can play, as we know how important that is for a first grader. And my third grader, I asked him what his favorite part about the wellness program was, and he said, blacktop Friday, and he's always coming home with his games that we always incorporate at home. But also, he said that it allows him to get his sillies out so that he can then focus for the rest of the day. And those were his words, you know, that he said. So just representing to you as a, as a mom of two boys who are, for anyone that has boys, they're very active, so the wellness program definitely helps that, as well as I know some, some fellow parents that it helps their children even with the transition to come home. If they have wellness at the end of the day, they're able to then focus on their homework. So I'm just here representing as a mom. I'm also a small business owner here in Plainville. My husband and I, for six years, have a health and wellness company that we do, he's full-time. I do it part-time, so health and wellness is a big part of our passion and our core of who we are as people. So I just want to pass it along and support you all in making a decision, and just to let you know how important the wellness program is to us at Tofflon. So I would like to introduce our PTO president, Anka. She has some, some stuff to say, and then we do have a few people who couldn't be here. They asked if it's okay if we can read a couple of their little testimonies or statements.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not a public speaker. So my name's Anka Barans Cook, I live at 55 Redstone Hill. I'm here speaking as a mom of two boys as well, but also as the PTO president, so a lot of people have come to me on this issue more than any other issues in the three years that I've been the president. People that I have never heard of, they've actually come and sent emails and come to the meetings and what have you. So I've written some things down. In 2015, I was super excited and proud that Plainville was introducing such an innovative wellness program into our elementary schools. I have friends in Andover and other towns that were just amazed that we could pull something like that off. My understanding at the time was it was implemented because we, research showed that the level of inactivity among children in the U.S. was alarming, and because research demonstrated that children are more attentive, engaged, and ready to learn when they have opportunities to move around. Now, this very program is slated to be eliminated, but those facts are all still true. Activity improves retention and performance, and teaching kids about fitness, nutrition, and healthy habits at a young age will help them to live healthier, happier lives. It was very clear to us all from comments at the recent PTO meeting that the wellness program is truly valued by parents, teachers, and students alike. The wellness period gives our kids a chance to de-stress, get a much-needed break in their busy academic days, and to enjoy structured games. But they're not just games, they're teaching important life skills such as team building, leadership, and even conflict management. The wellness program, certainly at Tofflon, has been a real benefit to our students over the past two years. We do understand that you're being forced to make cuts, but we feel the wellness program should remain since it's simply too important for the well-being of young children. Many kids do already participate in after-school sports, but I was reminded today by a parent that there are many others who don't. This sometimes is their only opportunity to get this sort of instruction and exercise. As Bethel had mentioned, I have a couple other letters, I don't know if I could read one. It's brief from Kim Cooney, a Tofflon mom. I think it would be devastating to lose this valuable program in our schools. The health and wellness of our students is critical in their overall performance. I believe it helps them stay focused throughout the day, and it's definitely a part of their day that they've come to enjoy and look forward to. The fact that the children are excited about staying healthy and making them aware that it's important to be active will lead to better choices as they grow older. The wellness program has become their routine, and if it's taken away, I think it will impact their focus and motivation throughout the school day. We need to find a way to keep this program within our schools. That's all I had, but we have another couple of parents, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Candace Kachowski, 69 Northwest Drive, and I'm also a small business owner in the town. I have my own statement and then another one from someone that emailed in. My son Bennett is in third grade at Tofflon. He was diagnosed after extensive testing last year with ADHD. We knew for a long time that something was going on with him. He was just too young before that to truly get anything out of the testing for him. The wellness program at Tofflon has been a godsend to him. He not only has the energy of a regular eight-year-old boy, but when you add in ADHD on top of it, he can be a wind-up-top that never stops. He needs the movement, the, you know, the constant exercise and movement that something like the wellness program can offer. It's a release valve for him, essentially. His ADHD is well-treated with medication at this point, we're very fortunate with that. And while it's better, and we have a 504 plan in place for him in case, right now, we are able to actually suspend that plan due to both the medication and the opportunities for movement and exercise during the day, as well as with his amazing teachers who are able to make some small concessions about movement and learning in the classroom, and if they want to do writing on the floor, they can do writing on the floor. If they want to curl up in a recliner for a while, they can do that, too. The teachers work well with the students and individual needs that they have. It's the relief, the release valve of having that program, however, allows them to not have to make quite so many concessions that they would normally have to do. The ability, the ability for him to move in the classroom and have those specific times allows him to burn off that extra energy that really drives him. With the removal of this program, I worry that we'll have to put him back on an active 504 plan, which will not only affect him, but it will affect the teacher and the other children in the classroom. I know we're facing serious budget issues that are no fault of the town, obviously, but the price of this program really is minor when you consider everything else that can be on the table for this. I respectfully request that the cut to the wellness program be reconsidered. And the other statement I have from Sue Clark, who is a Tofflon parent. I would like to take a moment to express to you the importance of our wellness program here at Tofflon. This program teaches our children how to cooperate with each other, work together to solve problems, follow rules, and have fun. It also gives them a much-needed break in their day. It's a structured break that gives them a physical and fun way to de-stress. I believe that these things our wellness program teaches our children helps to create a well-balanced child who can be productive and ready to learn. If our children are stressed out and made to go long periods of time without a break, they're less likely to pay attention and achieve their best academically. Many companies invest millions of dollars in workshops and meetings to help their employees with team building and how to be less stressed. They invest this money in order for their employees to be more productive and happier in their jobs, and I believe that we should invest our wellness, in our wellness program so that we can be, have more productive children who are able to work together and are happy to be at school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Krista Hagan. I live at 127 Northwest Drive. I moved to Plainville in April of 2016, and I had no idea what an amazing community this is and school Tofflon is, and we're so happy to be here. When we first moved, a friend told me, your, your kids are gonna go to Tofflon, they have the wellness program. And that was like the first thing my kids said when they came home, was just how wonderful the wellness program is, and it's still one of their favorite things. I have a letter from another parent that I would like to read to you, from Laura Montana. She says, Dear Plainville Board of Education Members, I'm writing this letter to voice my support of the wellness program that was initiated in May 2015. I am so proud of this initiative in the Plainville schools and believe it is very important in addition to support our children's learning. It is well researched that movement is what activates the brain and drives development forward. Movement is essential to learning. Children need to move in order to develop and refine their balance, coordination, visual motor integration, endurance, and core strength, all of which directly affect their ability to function in school. According to pediatric occupational therapist Lauren Shales, exercise and fresh air improve respiration and circulation, which supplies nutrients and oxygen to the brain, making it possible to concentrate. Exercise also increases the body's levels of serotonin and dopamine. The importance of having a sufficient supply of these two neurotransmitters cannot be overstated since they directly affect the ability to function in school, to learn, and to learn by allowing for cognitive and emotional flexibility and improving sustained attention to task, impulse control, and memory. I could go on and on about why our kids need more opportunities for movement, not less. As an occupational therapist and a mom, I know this to be true. I am sure that many teachers have seen an improvement in their students' ability to focus as a result of the wellness program. I can appreciate that there are tough decisions to be made due to funding constraints, however, I really believe the wellness program is important enough to keep in our schools. As Maya Angelou said, do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better. Thank you for your careful consideration of this important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bethel Hairston, again, 4 Maxine Road. Excuse me. I have two statements to read from two parents who couldn't be here. The first is Kristen Campbell. She says, I am unable to attend tonight's Board of Ed meeting. However it's possible, I would like to share my opinion regarding the wellness program at Tofflon School. I have three children attending Tofflon Elementary School. Often when my children are asked about their favorite part of the day, their answers revolve around an activity they learned at wellness. They love sharing with me the objectives of the game, problems they encountered and solved during the game, followed by, can we play it here? Not only do my children love the wellness program, I love the way Tofflon has incorporated the program into their daily schedules. I believe giving my children that added physical break during the day helps them refocus on the tasks necessary when back in the classroom. I understand tough decisions need to be made in order to bring a balanced budget to the table. I am asking that you please revisit other options that may be scaled back instead of the wellness program. It truly is a benefit to the children. And the second statement is Rebecca Simpson. I am unable to attend the Board of Ed meeting on February 12th, but would like to voice my opinion for the Board of Ed to hear. I have four children in Plainville schools, two at Tofflon, one in middle school, and one at Wheeler. I feel and know that the wellness program has been very beneficial to my child, who has ADD, ADHA combined. The wellness program gives our children the opportunity to release any built-up energy they may have, so that they can then go back into the classroom, set, setting, ready to learn. It is a long day for all, and we all need that break, especially elementary-age children. I know that my child needs this so that his day can be a success instead of frustration. Please consider who this cut will actually hurt, and also remember who your number-one concern should really be. Thank you for your time, and please reconsider your decision. And again, we're so grateful for, for your time and for the ability to come up and speak and voice for our children and also for us, and, you know, just to keep in mind that our bodies are meant to move, we're not supposed to sit all day, it's not super healthy for us, and with today's world, with the technology world, any extra added activities we could do, especially starting with elementary school children, is truly beneficial to them, which is truly beneficial to them, which then filters into the rest of their day and their lives. So, again, thank you, very grateful for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin, Benjamin Udoman, five Dickman Road. I'm here to speak in support of the indoor track program, and especially after watching Mr. Farrell's presentation. If it's a zero add to the budget, it's a no-brainer. I have two students in the school. They fall ath, they are both fall athletes and spring athletes. They flounder in the winter. Their grades, their grades go down. Their time management is horrendous. They do the best they can, but during their sports seasons, they're able to focus, use time management, and get things done. If they have too much time on their hands, then they don't. I've had quite a few parents contact me over the last couple of days that were not able to be here. They asked me to read their names off. Linda Lantini, Christine Mallett, Mary Lou Friedus, Cindy and Steve Barker, Helen and Jason Santini, and Kellen DeRosa have told me that all of their children would participate in this program, as well as my two. We hire the administrators in this town to work their budgets and do, do what's right for our children. Let them do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Christy Chambrello Ramsey and we recently moved. We lived on ninety-two William Street. Within the last month, we purchased a home on two twenty-three Farmington Ave. So we've made the investment in our children to stay in this town. I'm a parent of three school-aged children. I have two high schoolers and a seventh grader. My daughter is the person who would be most interested in the, the indoor track program. She currently does cross-country and she currently does track in, in the spring. Someone had asked before the difference between a club and a sport. What I found, my daughter did do the running club in the middle school. It was cross-country, but they, they ran it as a club at the time. It was hard for them to compete between the different schools. I think that would still cost money if they were still to do a club, if they were to do it interscholastically within different districts, so it would still have a cost to it. But I'm impressed with Mr. Farrell. I think he's done well for our children. I've seen all three of my students here really increase their interest in the sports programs here. The one thing I was thinking of when I was sitting and listening is my daughter does well with the individual sports. That's why in the winter, it would be hard for her to do something like basketball. She's tried all of those sports and running really seems to be an interest of hers. She's a straight A student. This would give her the opportunity to be a three-season athlete and I think she'd really love to put that on her college applications. Right now, she really doesn't have that opportunity and it's not that she wouldn't take advantage of it. It's not, it's just not given to her. So, thank you, Mr. Farrell, and I, I fully support the indoor track program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am Rob Tanner, eleven Orchard Lane. Here in support of the indoor track program. I no longer now have a student in the Plainville school system. My oldest daughter, Sarah, was two thousand and eight. Son, Matthew, two thousand and eleven, and Lauren, who graduated last year. So, I've spanned the time when they did have an indoor track. My oldest daughter was a participant all four years. And what I see, you know, this is a sport which is nice where you have a lot of kids that, maybe other sports, you know, you might have to be at a certain skill level to be a participant, where here, a lot of kids that might not have done other events, I've seen people try. And it's become a springboard for other sports or continuation, you know. I've seen with my kids had done soccer is soccer or cross-country, a lot of them during the winter would have loved to been able to run. You know, my oldest daughter did. She participated, loved representing the school. Indoor track gives that ability where you have a lot of athletes where the goal is betterment, improving their own time, not necessarily that you're gonna be placing, you're gonna be in the state, but you see improvement. You see support of the students. You know, and that's the one thing I really enjoyed in watching the years when my daughter did it, is everybody was cheering for each other to improve, to get better. Did you do better, you know? How was your training? Now, I thought also those that coached during that time, it just created a great supportive environment. And then in seeing the presentation today, the way Athletic Director Farrell has, it does, like what Ben said, is somewhat a no-brainer in that the cost is there. But you just look at the participation. You look at then through the wintertime to have a, this kind of forum. My other two kids were doing other winter sports. They wouldn't have benefited, but I've seen a lot of kids that started in indoor and had then gone on to other things. So, I hope that you consider this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you miss me? Shell Provost, six Overlook Drive. First, I'd like to thank you all for your work on the budget. I know the time commitment, I know the heartache that can be involved in this process. As a homeowner, I'm here tonight to say that I'm, I'm concerned that the budget that's being put forth is looking at some sort of arbitrary bottom-line amount rather than the value of those dollars. While no one likes to consider the possibility of a tax increase, especially those of us on the other side of sixty, the thing that is more damaging to a household budget, and in my opinion, I know personally from mine, would be a decrease in property value. So, we all understand that when purchasing property, the value is based on the safety of a town and the school system in a town. And I would rather, I'd rather look at a tax increase than a loss in my resale value. To maintain the quality of life in a town, especially a small town like Plainville, it's not as easy as a simple price tag. There's, there's been issues with insurance this year. Had there not been this rather tsunami effect, the board of ed would be putting forward a budget that'd be less than two percent, which is outstandingly reasonable anywhere. I don't think that we should slash dollars from the school to make up for the situation that we find ourselves in. In the past, we had a policy in the Plainville Community Schools to reevaluate, reprioritize, and reinvest. So, asking our administration now to reevaluate, to reprioritize, and then pull the rug out of the reinvestment doesn't do anything to move our schools forward. A school resource officer has been identified by our chief of police and our high school principal as important to the forward momentum at Plainville High. Plainville High has a positive environment and the most important thing is to keep that moving forward. The chief, I don't need to go into what the chief said, he was articulate. He obviously has experience and understands the value in this. We are the Plainville Community Schools. So that link with the resource officer and the schools strengthens that community, the community part of that. And besides that, it makes good economic sense. The ability to stop a problem before it happens means we're not dealing with expulsions. We're not dealing with the cost of expulsions and expulsion hearings. Those are expensive and they're negative. Being able to proactively avoid that situation, I'm losing my place. To avoid that situation just keeps our schools are positive. It's a win-win. So, again, I'm asking the board to look at the, the value in it, not simply a dollar, simply a dollar amount. Our chief of police is tasked with the safety of our town, our high school principal with the management of that school, and our superintendent with the management of the district. They're the trained professionals, they offer us their expertise. We can have discussions around everything, around wellness, around track, but at the end of the day, it's important that we listen first to, to those people who have the experience and the expertise to know what is gonna continue to move us forward. Indoor track is gonna benefit a lot of students for minimal investment. The long-term benefits of offering this sport far away the cost. It offers more students the opportunity to participate in a team sport. It's an outstanding individualized extracurricular activity and it's very valuable on a college application. Someone just spoke and said, you know, the ability of a student applying to college to say, "I'm a three-season athlete versus a two", it's, it's important. College is getting more and more competitive. So with all due respect and eight-plus years of a full understanding of what your budget process entails, I'm asking this board of education to do its job and to put forth a budget that's in the best interest of public education and the Plainville Community Schools, one that includes the resource officer, indoor track, and a consideration of the wellness program. Thanks.
Thanks, Farrell.
Thank you.
Hello, Rebecca Martinez, eight Irving Street. I wanted to come tonight to show my support of having a student resource officer at PHS. When people hear "officer" at a high school, many think, "Do we really need that?" This is Plainville, we live in a great town. We do not have a big crime or drug problem in our town, but SRO officers are not just being utilized in towns with high crime rates or drug problems in their schools. SRO officers are a huge asset in many respects. In fact, a few of the close-by towns that already have them in place, such as Berlin, Newington, Southington, and Avon, have had very positive experiences. As far as crime and violence go, I personally do not know how much of a need there is. There isn't a publication that comes out with statistics, with statistics on the school fights, threats, bullying, et cetera. I think most people would agree, though, that having the physical presence of an officer would deter kids significantly and reduce those instances. These officers have relationships with the kids, administrators and judicial systems. Having an SRO intervene sooner may really be able to help reduce the amount of suspensions, expulsions, and arrests. The students get to know them. These officers provide education and counsel the kids as well. One issue that has been increasing everywhere and as well in Plainville as well is online issues with giving out too much personal information, online bullying, and texting inappropriate messages. To be honest, on my stance on that, especially before having children of my own, it's funny how our opinions change before we actually have our children, is that parents should be monitoring their own kids. That is their responsibility. Now, I have a seven-year-old who does not have an electronic device of his own, but can use my iPad supervised. He had a friend sleepover last weekend who brought his tablet with him. When he turned it on, I looked at the screen and it looked like an age-appropriate racing game. Then I saw there was a comment bar where people were playing and could talk to each other. This child, without realizing the repercussions, had made some friends and said what school he went to and what park he lived directly next to. I did speak with his parents and him about the importance of not giving out that information. SOR, SRO officers can provide education on these issues and serve as a resource. Bullying is nothing new. The part of bullying, the new part of bullying now is that it follows you home. Kids that are bullied do not get a break from it. How many times have we heard on the news, "Another young life was lost due to online bullying"? We have teenagers texting their boyfriends or girlfriends very suggestive pictures that are then passed around the schools and turn into situations. These are teenagers, their brains are not even close to fully developed and they, quite frankly, make poor decisions. So, my stance has now completely changed now that I am a mom. I can do my best to control my children's devices as they get older. They will know that this mom can and will always look through their things. If I pay for it, I have access to it. That's my motto and they know it. I cannot, though, control other kids. This is a problem that really takes a village and having a resource officer in the school to help educate would be such an asset. The last point I want to make is that I read that Mr. Metta comes from a school with a resource officers and would like to see Plainville have one. He does know what the needs of the Plainville High School are. He's there every single day and I think we should do our best to support what he feels our schools need. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
I just wanted to start out by saying thank you for the opportunity.
Just your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Michelle Bolinger, I live on two Jude Road. Again, thank you for the opportunity of allowing the Plainville community to speak tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the wellness program. I have two children, one of them is in kindergarten and one of them is not yet school-aged. On his way home, on our way home from school today, I had asked him, "So buddy, what are your three favorite things about Toffelon Elementary School?" And he literally rubbed his hands together, he said, "Oh, this is gonna be good." And he said, "Number one is active play. Number two is art, and number three is wellness." Totally unprompted. So, I am a high school wellness teacher at a different district and wellness is a course that is required K through twelve. Within the high school itself, wellness is a requirement for both freshmen and sophomores within the high school. I know a lot of you may be thinking, "Well, there is PE within the elementary school, so why not get rid of the wellness program?" I could be assuming, but I've heard that a lot, talking to other people. So there's a difference between wellness and PE. PE is more movement-based, more activity-based. As you get older, it's more sport-based as well. Having the wellness aspect along with PE is separate. So that's more of the social, the emotional well-being of students of all ages, starting from early ages, especially the elementary school. So I was sitting here listening to everybody else, I noticed the signs everywhere, "Inspire, Prepare, and Engage." So I was thinking, my twelve years being a wellness teacher, which is both the health wellness aspect and the phys ed aspect, I was thinking about the times where I have inspired, prepared, and engaged students. And this one girl in particular came to mind and I had her, she just graduated last year. When she was a freshman, we were in the health aspect, taught her about the whole nutrition and everything. She was so inspired by my wellness class that from freshman year to junior year, she ended up educating herself beyond my class because we do focus on lifelong fitness, lifelong well-being, lifelong social and emotional health. She was inspired so much that she decided to focus her life more on the nutrition side of her well-being, starting with the information that she learned from my class in particular. She ended up losing forty pounds and continued with that role for her remainder of the three years I worked at high school. Once she graduated, she ended up majoring in nutrition. She wanted to be a nutritionist. She told me that was all because of the wellness program that inspired her within my school district. So, again, for those who aren't educated on how wellness works or how the wellness program works in general, it does inspire. I've seen it myself firsthand and it does start at a very young age. In a sense, that does also prepare the younger students to grow and to maintain a healthy lifestyle outside of the school system. And that's very hard to come by, especially working in the high school. Once high school students go home, they want nothing to do with school in general, for the most part. But the wellness program is sort of different because it does apply to everyday life. It does apply to lifelong fitness and education and well-being. So it will prepare them for a better future once they leave the school system and are on their own. And then the third message I see there was the word engage. What class is more engaging than wellness? Speak, all these parents who spoke about their own children in particular mentioned wellness. Wellness, love wellness, they bring wellness home. They, the activities that they learn in wellness, they also want to apply at home, which actually gives me the opportunity to connect more with my son because the activities that he does do in wellness, he, he brings home and I can share with him and do it with him as well. So, he, he is engaged, these students are engaged, they enjoy it. We have proof over and over again from the parents here that this program is a lot more important than a lot of people think. So I just wanted to ask you to, again, reconsider and I understand that the budget is something huge and something that is very difficult for you to pick and choose where you need to move the money around, but please reconsider the wellness program. It is something imperative in order to prepare students for a healthy lifestyle, starting from a very young age. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sue LaCombe, two zero four West Main Street in Plainville. And I'm here tonight in support of the indoor track. I think it would be a wonderful thing for Plainville to incorporate this team sport back. I mean, our kids are all in and the fact that we have three participating for Plainville, going to another school is, is kind of sad. We're looking at numbers, you're looking at, at the budget, we're looking at our home value, our taxes, and when you see how many kids are participating in winter sports in compared to the amount of kids we have in this school, it's kind of sad when we could give them the opportunity to have another sport here that they could take part in during the winter. So, I guess I would just ask that you guys, do like the kids, go all in, give them everything we've got to give them, especially at a low-cost budget like Mr. Farrell said, after he worked all the numbers out. I mean, I think it would be much more rewarding and proud for Plainville to see all that we do offer our kids. When you hear everybody speaking about the wellness program, the sports, I mean, for a small town, we do a lot, we have big pride and I think it would be great if we could offer our students a winter sport such as indoor track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ally Shambro, and I live on 223 Farmington Avenue. I'm here in support of the indoor track team. I'm currently a sophomore at this high school, and I run cross-country and track, and I loved running cross-country. Most of the girls on the team, I was already friends with going in, but as the season progressed, we got much closer than we already were. Some of them I wasn't able to see during school. We were always able to talk and hang out during cross-country. And I love running. I've been running since sixth grade track season, and I'm currently trying to get ready for track season in the spring, and I think indoor track would be a great way to do that. And as Mr. Farrell said, there's not really an increase in the budget, and I know that there are people who are interested and would love to do this, as would I, because it would be really fun to do, and it's something that I know that Southington has. I know people who run Southington Track, and they love it. Indoor track has actually inspired one of my friends to continue with track during the spring season, and I think it could be very beneficial to this school. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Oops. Hi, Teresa Harper, 245 Farmington Avenue. I just wanted to say three quick things. Number one, I'm no longer a parent. I don't have any kids. I am a parent, but I don't have any. You're always a parent. Anyway, I don't have any kids in the school anymore, but three of my kids did graduate from Plainville High. Two of them were involved in sports, one was not, but I would definitely say that if you're able to bring back the indoor track team without any additional cost, I really don't see why you wouldn't do that when it's going to benefit so many kids. I know when my younger son was here, some of his friends were on the track team. He graduated in 2009, so I know you had it then. I'm not really sure why you took it away, but it would be great if you could bring it back. The other thing is, not to be outdone by all the Tofflon parents, but I have seen firsthand at Linden Street, the wellness program, and I think it is amazing. I really wish it had been around when my kids were in school. I think they would have benefited greatly by having wellness every day. Physical education is not an everyday thing. Wellness is, and wellness benefits every student in the elementary school. And the last thing is, it looks like you listed some things that you were going to cut. Wellness was one of them. There were some teachers at the high school. There were some other things. And then I saw something that you were trying to add. I think it was a math teacher at the high school and the resource officer. So, it kind of didn't make a whole lot of sense to me that you would be cutting a bunch of things, especially wellness, which is benefiting so many kids, even though I feel like, yes, it would be great to have a resource officer at the high school. If you can't do that without taking away from something that's benefiting so many kids, I think you need to be looking at why the budget is kind of out of whack, and it seems like it's because of the health insurance. So, if you could do something to decrease the health insurance, that would be great, and add the resource officer without adding too much to the budget, that would be phenomenal. Anyway, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, last call. Anybody else? Okay, thank you all very much for all of your comments. Next, we have our council liaison, Mrs. Puglisi.
Good evening. Kathy Puglisi, 50 West Broad Street. Wonderful comments tonight from people in our community for a lot of different reasons. These budgets have become far more difficult over the past year for not only the Board of Education, but for the town council as well. Many things are no longer things we can directly control, such as funding from the state of Connecticut, such as issues with our health insurance plan. We're doing our due diligence to tackle everything, and the comments and contributions of the parents certainly are important as you deliberate tonight on your budget. So, I think that's, they're very wise to come here and give you their feelings. I'll just highlight a few things that the council's been dealing with and that we will be dealing with going forward. Our water pollution control phosphorus project, on January 30th, the referendum was approved, 193 to 31. Eighty-five percent of those who voted, voted yes, so that initiative did pass. The next step is to finalize a construction contract with tie and bond and then go out to bid for the project probably sometime in March. A formal application will be submitted to request funding under the Clean Water Fund, and construction could begin probably this summer. Most likely, it'll take two years to complete that. Our grand list was recently announced for the October 2017 grand list. It was completed with an increase of $7,821,477 from the previous grand list. Real estate increased 2.4 million. Personal property increased 2.7 million, and motor vehicles by 2.75 million. What this means, it's a .56 increase with an overall increase of $203,757 additional revenue dollars under a current net rate of 33.43. So, essentially, the council has $203,000 in additional revenue that we can look to to help balance our expenditures. That's a relatively small amount of money, as we all know. However, we will certainly put it to good use. Our Northwest Drive paving project will begin. We received grant funding for the project through the DOT for $1.1 million, which is a repave of Northwest Drive from the Pecquabic River Bridge to the intersection of Perrin Road. The construction will begin over the summer months, and this was a competitive grant application process that is being fully funded by the Department of Transportation through our Lot-Sip program. We recently had a public hearing for the Gap Closure Trail Study Report. The council received comments from the public regarding the proposed draft of the Gap Closure Study Report. The meeting was widely attended with several dozen participants speaking. The council also received an additional several dozen emails that expressed either support or opposition to the project. Action on the proposed alignment will be taken at an upcoming council meeting. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for the use of the Middle School of Plainville Auditorium. Special thanks to Kevin Ross and his staff for the assistance with the audio support during the public hearing. It enabled us to use wireless microphones so that we could get to a great number of people to take their comments. And finally, the town council will begin budget deliberation during the weeks of March 12 through March 22. Our work sessions will be posted. They're open to the public. You can't participate, but we'd certainly appreciate if anybody's interested in what the town council is going to do with the budget to come to these work sessions. It is going to be an interesting time for the town council. We appreciate the communication and collaboration with the Board of Education. We all know that the insurance issue has created another whole layer of work for some people, but with the understanding that this is a very significant issue, that the board and the council must do something to try and manage in a different manner. And I believe we will get there. It's going to take a little bit of time, but our goal is to get it implemented by July 1st if we can. So, again, many thanks for your support with the proposal that was presented last week, and we look forward to anything else we can do collaboratively. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any for me tonight.
Any questions?
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, next we have the superintendent's report. Before I give it to Dr. Brumman, I just want to let everybody know that's waiting. She will review the budget. We are not going to vote on it till later in our meeting, so for people that are staying, I just want you to understand that. So, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Brumman.
Thank you very much. I would now like to invite our representative from the middle school, Mr. Guarino, to begin the presentation on the state of the middle school. Mr. Guarino, take it away.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brumman, and thank you all of you for once again inviting me to come and speak about the middle school. Let me just bring up my notes here. I did shower. Kind of nice I did my hair, too. All right. So, again, I love my job, and I love the middle school, so this is always a lot of fun for me. So, thank you again for this opportunity to update you on the state of the middle school. And this evening, I've asked two of our most talented and knowledgeable teachers to assist me with this presentation. Elise Caffuri, our instructional leader in language arts, and Robin Newport, our instructional leader in math, will be up in a little while to describe for you the great work that's being done at the middle school of Plainville and their respective departments, and actually represents what we're doing throughout the school. I'd like to put up a few photographs. It's just a little bit of a taste of all the wonderful things that are happening at the middle school. I can't go over all of them, so we have some photographs here. In the upper left, we have two student representatives. We have student representatives to our student council, and this was pajama day, this picture of the three young ladies up there in the corner. One of the many-spirit days that the student council has sponsored this year, under the supervision of Melinda Buth, the MSP student council has raised $2,600 for the Connecticut Children's Medical Center's Department of Oncology this year. And most recently, they organized a collection of nearly a half-ton of non-perishable food items for the Plainville Food Pantry. So, it's a great group, the student council. The next photo to the right, clockwise of that one, is some of our MSP band members who dressed up and played at the Plainville Recreation Department's annual Halloween Parade. We do that every year, have a lot of fun there, and thanks to Barb Senator for coordinating with the rec department for that. To the right of that is a photo of some of the MSP students in scouting programs who played a key role in our annual Veterans Day celebration. In the lower left, where am I? In the low, where am I? Down to the bottom left, bottom left, yes, thank you, is a photo of our, I've lost my place now. How did it go? Ah, to the lower left is the art club. Thank you, and some of the creations they made for the senior center this past fall. They actually just did another art project that they donated to another community organization as well. The lower center is a photo of our highly successful Vex Robotics Club. And just this past weekend, by the way, under the supervision of Camille Westfall and Laurel Schwartz, the team cleaned up at a competition in New Haven, winning three first-place awards, including top prize for overall excellence. So, it's a great program there, too. And finally, in the lower right, we have a group of students from the middle school of Plainville who attended the Engineering Your Future Conference at the University of Connecticut with our school counselor, Jessica Pepin. The conference was for boys from underrepresented backgrounds, designed to introduce them to role models in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math STEM programs. It was a great day. And we have the rings, and I didn't put that up there just so that, you know, get brownie points with my boss. Please know that we do. Every time we think about anything we do at the middle school, make sure that everything is connected to the board's vision and goals, and we keep things in alignment to that and refer back to the document. Next slide shows some basic demographics for the middle school of Plainville. We have currently 549. It was 548 last week. It's 549 this week. We added a new student this week, students at the middle school, and that's been holding steady for the last few years and is projected to hold steady for the next few years after this. We have 48 classroom special ed teachers in the building. It'll be 47 as proposed by the budget next year as an anticipated reduction in one of the special ed teachers at the middle school. There's three administrators, three school counselors, a school psychologist, library information specialist, and we have five shared related service providers, so OT, PT, psychology, speech and language, a band instructor that we share with other schools in the district. Currently, we have 12 paraprofessionals at the middle school, and we have six tutors. Again, we are looking to reduce that to five in the next budget, the loss of a literacy tutor at the middle school. Since my start as the principal in 2007, we have been adjusting, I'm going to back up a slide, we have been adjusting for population changes and budget constraints, and we've dropped from 51 to 47 teachers. So, know that we've lost four. We will be, next year, have reduced by four full-time faculty members at the middle school, and we've reduced from 19 to 12 paraprofessionals. And we're doing well, but I would be remiss not to also mention that that does put stress, particularly when we lose positions like a special ed position and paraprofessionals. It impacts oral literacy tutor, the most vulnerable students in our population. This slide is just one way we look at school climate. There are many ways to analyze that, but as you can see, this particular slide is about office referrals. We've made significant improvement in student behavior, as you can see by the dramatic reduction in behavior requiring referrals for disciplinary action over the last 10 years. So far this year, we have had 164 referrals. This pace puts us in a similar place to the 2014-2015 school year. So, you know, the last couple of years has been a slight increase, which we have been analyzing and look at, but it's still well within what is considered healthy for a middle school. I show you this next slide because it gives you a sense of how we drill down the behavioral data to better understand what's happening in the school so that we can respond more effectively. The bus continues to be the place where the most disciplined referrals are generated by middle school students. It's not surprising. We're putting 60, 40, 50, 60 kids on a bus with no adult to watch them because we hope the driver is actually watching the road as much as possible. Even though students only spend a very small portion of their day on the bus, it does generate a large number of referrals, and the time that it takes to respond to those effectively in a way is sort of good because it means that the behavior in the school building is even better than one might imagine when you simply look at the overall referral numbers. In response to this data, we continue to work with the bus company and drivers to address student behavior on the bus, including training for bus drivers to more proactively handle misbehavior, and we also do lessons for the students on expected behavior on the bus. This slide also revealed a doubling of referrals from our cafeteria from the 2015-16 to the 2016-17 year. We responded to that data by increasing the number of adult cafeteria monitors. Teachers at MSP now have lunch duty, at least in sixth and eighth grade, and I can tell you, this has had a powerful impact, and referrals from the cafeteria this year are negligible. I could not figure out a way at this point to get teachers into our seventh-grade lunch shift without violating some contractual obligations. Hence, the seventh grade is generating the most of the cafeteria referrals we have. We are working on that. To put behavioral data into perspective, I show you this graphic. The pyramid analogy has been used by researchers to illustrate what a healthy school or middle school should look like for a long time. What it shows is that 80% of the students at a typical middle school should be effectively managed by a good tier-one intervention plan. At the middle school, this would be, among other things, our PBIS program. So, this year so far, 84% of our students have not received a referral. On the flip side, 16% of the students have received a referral and have required more personalized intervention as a result. These figures are well within the expected limits of a healthy school environment. They would say, you know, below 20%. Students require a little bit more individualization. Only 11 students so far this year, or less than 2% of the population, have received two or more referrals. This is also well within that 5% expected in a healthy school environment. So, we've had some increase in some of our referrals this year. We're still well within that limit, keeping a close eye on it. Again, I would be remiss to not mention that as we do reduce faculty and staff, class sizes go up, the number of personalized interventions by adults for students with special needs gets less than, you know, crack start to form. But right now, we're still healthy and happy at the middle school. Moving on to standardized test data, this slide summarizes the last two years of SBAK scores for MSP. It's actually the third year. Last year, we had it. The first year, they changed it from year one to two and took out the writing portion, so I'm just looking at the last two test years. And as you can see from the chart, the percentage of students scoring at or above the target range in English, language arts, and math has held pretty steady from the range in English, language arts, and math has held pretty steady from the 15-16 to 16-17 school year, within a percentage point of each other. The chart also gives us information about how our high-needs student population is performing. So that would be students who are English language learners, students on free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities. As you can see from the far-right column, we are less than a percentage point below the state averages in math and language arts in the general population, but actually at this point, exceeding the state averages with our more high-needs population. Overall, the state categorizes us as Level 2 or progressing, which is a desirable place to be. I mean, we'd love to be at excelling. So we're not satisfied with this level of progress. It's not what we'd like to see. We'd like to be moving at a much more rapid rate toward excelling. And that's one of the reasons why I've asked Mrs. Kafury and Mrs. Newport here this evening so they can describe how we're responding to the standardized test data and other initiatives that the state has asked us to take on. This final slide in my portion of the presentation provides attendance data. As you can see from the chart, we had a dramatic increase in the percentage of students being categorized as chronically absent from 15-16 to 16-17. Chronic absenteeism means that a student is absent 10% or more of the school year, so 18 absences or more in a 180-day school year. It is important to know that the state changed the definition of absent to include days that a student is present less than 50% of a school day during this time. So in the past, when a student left school early or had an appointment, and they were here for less than the school day, so at the middle school, that means they might have left at 11, before 11:15 and not coming back, we would count that as being present. It no longer counts as being present. So we're still concerned about any student who are chronically absent from school. So one of the first things we have done and will continue to do is to try to inform parents about the change in attendance regulation. I've put that information out, though I'm not so sure all parents have seen it yet, that, you know, your child is considered absent when they are not there for more than half of the day. And however, with some students, this is still not effective. And we still had 7.6% and 14.4% for our high-needs students the year before. And I'm not referring to students who are legitimately ill. For example, this year, we had a young lady who broke her leg pretty badly and missed a lot of school. That's to be expected. But there are students who do not come to school when they should, and for various reasons, their parents are unable to influence them to come, often because the parent or parents must leave for work before their child leaves for school, leaving an 11, 12, or 13-year-old or 14-year-old on their own to make sure they get up and get on that bus and come to school. And what we find among the many interventions that we've put in place, what's been most effective with cases like this is a personal contact or relationship with someone at school. I myself have gone to houses in the morning to pick up students, however inconsistently, because I have other responsibilities and I can't always just leave to go get a student. So I personally am excited to hear about the possibility of a school resource officer that we could also take advantage of at MSP, because I think such a person might be a great, would be a great solution in a number of cases like this, get kids to come to school. Because our experience is and does show that kids who are chronically absent in middle school will begin to be chronically absent in high school, lose credit, fall behind, spend more of their time in the community, not necessarily doing good. Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Kafury and Mrs. Newport to come up and give you their part of the presentation. Get out of their way.
It's going to take at least a minute to get set up and connect with your...
Are you touching it?
I'm not touching it.
Somebody... So Kevin's got somebody over there.
Hang on one second. Thank you for allowing us to, this opportunity to share with you tonight. We're going to provide an overview of our implementation of the Common Core standards and our response to the Smarter Balance standardized testing. Our presentation is designed to illustrate MSP's journey towards the common goal of mastery-based learning for our students.
So our journey began with knowing that we needed to shift our instructional pedagogy. Teachers had to refocus instruction in a way that would ensure that students were mastering objectives. At MSP, there's been a committee headed by Steve Lapage that has been doing an in-depth study of mastery-based learning over the past two years. Mastery-based learning is a method of instruction that's appropriate for all grade levels, content areas, and courses. The heart of the instruction is based on providing students with rapid feedback on their progression of mastering the standards. Teachers are then able to provide differentiated support based on individual learning needs.
So we share the Connecticut State Department of Education's vision of preparing students for college, career, and civic life. The cornerstone of this vision is the goal of having students demonstrate mastery of the Common Core State Standards at each grade level.
When Connecticut adopted the Common Core State Standards, it was imperative that the teachers had a solid understanding of these new rigorous standards. Through our professional learning communities and instructional departments, we've spent countless hours unpacking the standards. We were able to identify exactly what students will know and be able to do when they have mastered the standard, and what it would take to bring students of varying abilities to this level of mastery.
So we also looked at vertical progressions to deepen our understanding of the way the standards connect and build on one another as students move from one grade to the next. When we only look at the standards for our grade, it can be challenging to understand how this learning fits within the scope of a year or across multiple years. I can give you an example. In grade seven, the students have to add and subtract integers. And in order for us to build on that and teach that so that they have a good conceptual understanding, they have to build that in sixth grade. So they have to have a good understanding of integers, they have to understand a number and its opposite, how to make zero, it goes on and on, in order to actually be able to compute with negative numbers and then eventually rational numbers.
This led to our next area of focus, which was to develop learning goals and criteria for mastery. Three major questions were the driving force behind this work. What should our students know? What will mastery look like at each grade level? And what is best practice in our instruction? We're constantly working toward this common goal with our colleagues. It's a work in progress. The specific learning targets, the common understanding of mastery criteria, and the implementation of best practice is making teachers accountable to these standards.
So adoption of the Common Core State Standards also required student involvement. And at MSP, teachers have been working to help students foster a growth mindset, students who understand that the brain can get smarter, do better in school. So we've incorporated explicit growth mindset lessons into our curriculum and have adopted a growth mindset language in our classroom lessons. This helps students to focus on improvement and to view challenges as an important part of learning, and they see effort as a way to build their abilities.
Just as it was important for the teachers to articulate the learning goals, it was equally important, if not more important, for the students to be able to articulate them as well. We have rewritten the Common Core State Standards into student-friendly ICANN statements at each grade level. These statements break down the complex objectives into targets students can read and understand. The goal is to make students more responsible for their own learning and more reflective in their work.
So at MSP, a school-wide goal has been and continues to be on developing student capacity to self-assess, encouraging our students to examine their own learning and their levels of understanding, get students involved with and responsible for their own learning. It also increases motivation and supports a growth mindset. Self-assessment can also provide insight into students' true comprehension and to help identify gaps in student knowledge.
The Common Core State Standards challenge students to understand subject matter more deeply, think more critically, and apply their learning to the real world, as shown by the annual S-BAC testing. So our journey, of course, has included a response to the Smarter Balanced Assessment. We are currently using the S-BAC interim assessments to check where students are in their learning and to determine where they may need additional instruction. Students are also gaining valuable experience with computerized testing and how best to handle that.
So we've also used performance tasks as learning tools and as evidence of student learning. They are designed to deepen students' understanding of the concepts as students pull it all together. Performance tasks require students to apply the skills and the knowledge learned to demonstrate their knowledge, understanding, and proficiency. The PLC and department meeting time is to analyze this data. The data informs our decisions about how we're going to level our, for instance, our math instruction and the different math course offerings that we have, our response to intervention using SRBI, curriculum revisions, and instructional strategies that we're going to implement in the classroom.
This journey has illuminated some challenges with our current structures. The teachers at MSP are always striving to offer individualized attention and the feedback student needs. Feedback is one of the most important variables in improving student achievement. Mastery-based learning relies on our ability to provide this timely feedback. Unfortunately, the larger the class size, the more difficult this is to implement. It is one of the many challenges that are outside the control of the teacher in the classroom. Robin's going to illustrate the rigorous curriculum and the depth of conceptual understanding that's required by the student with a math problem comparison.
So I went looking at CMT math problems, and I really was focusing on ratios and proportions because in grade seven, that just happens to be one of our major focuses. And I, so I'm searching through the CMT problems, and this was the most difficult ratio and proportion problem that I can find. And if you look at it, it's relatively simple, and a student can pretty much calculate that they can multiply three times four and get 12 bananas, and they have solved the proportion. Whether they understand conceptionally, but they probably do on a very basic level, but whether they truly understand the proportions and ratios is not clear. So Smarter Balance and First Common Core has tried to solve that problem. So this is an example of an S-BAC sample problem. Can you zoom in? Click one more. Okay, there you go. So it's also a ratio and proportion problem. And if you look, the level of difficulty and the rigor is quite different. First of all, they have to look at a half a cup of milk for every 12 muffins. So now they have a fraction, and they're setting it up within a ratio. That's difficult for students. And secondly, if you look, they have to choose from six different responses, and they have to find which ones apply, which ones are equivalent to the original ratio that they have. Okay, so then, the question's not over. It moves on to part two. And here, they have to extend their understanding and apply that and extend it to one gallon of milk. And in order to do that, they have to be able to convert cups to gallons and then also set up that proportion and solve it. So the party's not over because in part three, they have to now extend that learning and extend it to 96 muffins every single day for 30 days. And they have to be able to then apply all of the previous knowledge to solve this problem. This is not the most difficult problem in grade seven on the S-BAC or in Common Core, but it is one that just was parallel to the proportional one from the CMT. So this is a challenge that we're facing. Quite excited about the math. As a math teacher, this is fun to me. This is what I love. So this is exciting to teach, but it's not without challenge. Because in order for students to really understand this problem, they have to understand fractions, conversions of gallons and cups, and ratios and proportions. So while it is challenging, it's exciting. It does require a lot of support and time. And the students that, I'm just going to put it in here, the students that are struggling or may perhaps have not a strong base from the previous year in understanding the standards are at risk. So this is where we, as teachers, and our PLC time and department time, work to try to solve these problems. How are we going to reach those students? And how are we going to provide them the support they need so that they can master the standards that are at the grade level and that build and that they need to be ready for the next grade level?
I'm really happy I don't teach math. So going forward, we're confident that we're moving in a positive direction on our road to mastery-based learning. Our next natural step at MSP is to transition to standard-based grading. This will allow us to align our grading practices to our standard-based instructional practices. You'll be hearing much more about this from Steve in an upcoming meeting.
So our journey towards mastery-based learning and our students is not a straight road. And there are bends and hills. Go back to the, so they could see the road. So there are bends and hills and turns along the way. And this graphic represents, well, okay, the graphic that was there represents the circular motion, and it's back and forth that we have to go through. So we continue to work at our PLCs to refine the curriculum and our instructional practices and to best meet the needs of our students. So we continue to unpack the standards, look at the vertical progressions, foster a growth mindset, and help our students develop their capacity to self-assess. All these things are contributing and growing our students.
We are extremely grateful for your support in helping us on this journey and for allowing Robin and I the opportunity to share with you the work that is being done. Please know that we are working extremely hard for the students in Plainville, and we will continue to strive to meet the needs of all students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you very much for your presentations and to state for the record, I really do like muffins.
They can make you 96 based on that math problem.
All set? Well, again, I want to thank Elise and Robin for helping me tonight. Our kids are in great hands with them. They're wonderful teachers and wonderful instructional leaders. So thank you. Again, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, Ms. Newport, and Ms. Kafury. That was an excellent report, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing at the middle school. It is truly a great place to learn. I would like to now invite Mr. Lapage to the podium. He will provide an overview of our class sizes, so the board will have that as we head into our budget deliberation. Thank you, Mr. Lapage.
So I get the fun report. It's my second year. I know it's very exciting. But I will say that it is exciting if you take each of the numbers on this report and replace it with the person that owns that number. So, and I'll start with that, in the sense that you'll learn about all the different positions in our district, not just the staffing positions, but also the students at each of the schools, and averages at the different grade levels and different classes. So just keep that in mind because it's really all numbers, and I could probably put myself to sleep just looking at the numbers. But if you think about the people involved, that's really what's important. I normally do this report in January, however, January was, well, at the time, we thought it'd be a busier meeting than the current one, but that didn't quite turn out to be true. So bear with me, I'm going to go through this as quickly and engagingly as possible. All right. I'd like to thank Carol Zadigren, Tina Gregas, and also Marilyn Nelson for their help with pulling some of these numbers together for this presentation. You've seen this before at the budget workshop meetings, and this is something that Sam created. In the past, we've used an outside source to create these enrollment forecasts. We found that Sam is just smarter and better at it and more accurate, so who needs to pay someone on the outside when you have Sam? I will say that what this shows you, even though you can't see it on the screen with the tiny numbers, is that the numbers are leveling out. That's in large part due to what you've heard tonight from a lot of the people who spoke. We have a tremendous school system and a great town that people want to live in. And we also have a new full-day, full-week preschool program that has a tremendous reputation growing quickly. I can tell you from all my residency investigations that people really want to live in town, and some don't, and I have to tell them they can't. And that's a difficult part of the job, but a necessary one. So with that said, I will say that this is showing a leveling from what we expected. If you could show the next slide, Mr. Ross. You've also seen this slide that Sam created that shows the actual versus the forecasted and the difference. And I'll bring your attention to the year that it was completed by the outside group. It was... So with that said, I will say that this is showing a leveling from what we expected. If you could show the next slide, Mr. Ross. You've also seen this slide that Sam created that shows the actual versus the forecasted and the difference. I'll bring your attention to the year that it was completed by the outside group, there was only a difference of 10 students. We had 10 more students than anticipated in that forecast. And last year, you can see that there was quite a difference, so the forecast was quite off by 199 students in 2018. We had 2,396 as opposed to the 2,197 that were expected. A lot of that, again, has to do with more students being enrolled with our full-day, full-week preschool program. On the next slide, you'll see our current staffing at the elementary school. These are elementary school teachers representing Linden, Wheeler, and Toffelon. These numbers vary from year to year depending on the size of the population within those given grades. So for year to year, there are adjustments that are made in order to adjust for that, to compensate, to keep class sizes at a reasonable number as best we can. So this year, we have 61 total elementary school teachers. For the, for next year's proposed budget, you'll see some different colors there, the, I guess, the darker teal blue representing reductions at different grade levels based on smaller class size, total population of students in those grade levels, and you'll see kind of the light blue representing an increase needed to account for changes in those grades where we need another teacher. So you'll see minuses and pluses. The net effect of that is a total of minus one elementary school teacher, so reducing from 61 last year to 60 this year. Two years ago, it was 62, so over the last two years, we've reduced two positions at the elementary level. Despite some fluctuations, yearly efforts by the elementary principals who do a tremendous job in coordination with Dr. Brummett and central office team have held class size averages relatively consistent and constant throughout the years. If you look from year to year, there are some dips and fluctuations based on some outlier grades, you know, where you have a larger number than another particular year. However, it's been pretty consistent. Sometimes there are outliers. For instance, this year at Wheeler, I know we've had pretty large class sizes in fourth grade with 25 students in some fourth grade classes. That's not typical in Plainville. We're used to enjoying much smaller class sizes overall. But many districts around the state do have larger class sizes, some have smaller class sizes. If you were to look at an average, it's probably somewhere around where we are or a little higher in most areas. Maintaining positive and responsive learning environments requires great care, planning when staffing, especially for our youngest students with so much to learn. So we take this responsibility very seriously and look at it very carefully every year with the team. The next slide is a slide that you've seen at the earlier budget workshops, so I won't spend too much time on this, but this just represents the total number of students in each grade, one through five, going down the left side for a total of 1091, grade six, seven, and eight. This is a projected enrollment for next year. It is looking, expect it to dip a little, but you know, the way things go, sometimes we have 40 students move into the district over the summer, and you just can't predict that as well as you'd like. And then the high school going up to 734, total in-district school enrollment of 2,352 over in the bottom right corner. The next slide shows our, the students in our open choice program are included in the numbers you saw in the last slide, 121 students, and that, we're expecting that that will remain fairly steady or go up slightly depending on if we have availability and a space where we can welcome those students into our, into our district. They've been a tremendous part of the fabric of Plainville, and we've been one of the longest standing and highest percentage districts in the state for open choice program. And it has great value, not just, not just the million dollars or so that they bring into the district, but also just having those students as a part of our community has been terrific. And actually, for, this year, four of the families from, who lived in Hartford and attended Plainville decided that they love Plainville so much and it's such a great town that they moved here. And they're now living in town, paying taxes, and coming to our schools. You can also see that the out-of-district placements, despite our special ed department who does a tremendous job of always keeping as many students as possible in district that we can meet the needs of, we have 27 students who are outplaced in various schools for their, to meet their needs that we cannot meet in district at this time. We have eight students in the Bristol-Vogewag program for a total of 35 out-of-district placements, and that amounts to 2,387 total students in the district this year. I'm sorry, that's what's projected. We also had 74 students in magnet schools, and that continues to go down, which is a good thing for us because we have to pay, it's about $5,000 per student who is at a magnet school that we have to share in the cost, even though they're not in our schools. So our schools are doing a great job of attracting and retaining our students in district with the tremendous programs, staff that we have. This next slide, I know you heard a lot from Matt and the tremendous instructional leaders, and they do, they do a tremendous job at the middle school. I've been really honored to work with that committee for the last couple of years, looking at transition to mastery-based, standards-based learning. Tremendous people there, working really hard. This shows you the averages at the middle school, and average doesn't tell you everything because there are always going to be outliers, and when you average them together, you get kind of, these numbers all seem relatively, relatively good size. Some are even, look even smaller, but when you look at, on the big picture, you'll see some math class sizes, grade six, seven, and eight, where you have classes of 25 up to 27, and you also have a science class with 25 students. So those are very difficult classes to pay that, give that individual attention that the students need in order to master the very challenging standards as you, as you saw with the muffin example. And there are many other examples in every, every different content area. Also something to consider, two years ago, when due to budgetary, you know, pressures to really be conservative, we reduced one ELA English Language Arts teacher. Last year, it was a social studies teacher, and I know Ms. Guarino shared, I believe it's going to be four teachers in total over the last four years, I think it was, and going from 51 to 47 projected next year. So there is an impact with instructional time. In order to make that work for the schedule for English Language Arts, they had to decrease from them having two blocks of, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Guarino, but two blocks of English Language Arts, you know, reading and then writing, and two chunks throughout the day of 90 minutes going down to 56 minutes per day in order to accommodate and to be able to schedule that. So that's one of the kind of, that's one of the, you know, less probably known side effects of, of staffing reductions. The next slide. So you can see the middle school class size averages. These are the, these are the special areas with art, music, or languages, and consumer science, and PE, and tech ed. These are all reasonable class sizes, of course, which is very important, especially when you have things like family consumer sciences and tech ed where safety is a big consideration. But they do a tremendous job, as you saw with our, the vector robotics team once again, being champions for, I think, the third or fourth or 10th time. They keep winning. It's amazing. The next slide shows you some of the high school core class averages. If you look at this, you know, it shows the section, number of sections on the left side, and the number of students in the middle, and you say, well, it's 1,115, 1,118. How's that possible? There's only just about 700 kids at the high school. Many kids take more than one of those courses in the content areas, so that's where the number comes from. And the average class sizes range from, you know, 18.32 up to 20.7 in some social studies classes, which is a smaller department of only six teachers. We also have six English senior seminar classes that have 25, there's six sections of English senior seminar that have 25 students in each, each section. Generally, elective classes are kept a little bit smaller just for safety reasons and, you know, more specialized equipment that needs to be utilized, so that's just another factor. And it's very difficult to project and to share. When you average it together, it just doesn't paint the picture, but the high school team does a great job of making sure that all the classes, you know, electives have at least 15 students, or very, very few exceptions to that, and most have many more than that. This just gives you a quick overview of middle school and high school staffing and all those different department areas for a total of 77.2. Staff members, you'll notice some, some fractions there, 7.2. We have 2.6 English teachers at the high school who work, you know, they teach three classes, not five, and they have a shortened schedule. In the superintendent's proposed budget, you'll also see that there's a unified arts teacher that would be decreased, a science teacher would be decreased, a math teacher would be added to meet graduation requirements and to allow for newly approved senior math course. This would result in one less science teacher, so they'd have nine, and then the math department would have eight, so it'd be a little more balanced in course offerings. I'm almost there. I know this is riveting, but it's important information. Remember, people, every number is a person, or part of a person, if you want to envision that. The point two. So this just shows you the certified, certified staff summary for this year, and there are a lot of decimal places up there. Those are shared positions between schools, like Vicki Trzynski's .33, .33, .44 for special ed, you know, at the elementary level, and Ms. Gomindal is .5 at the middle and high school, so that's how they, that's how it's showing up there, for a total of certified staff of 241.4 positions in the district. I'll go, I'll get right past that one. All right. The next one is specialist area staff summary. This shows you all the different, the number of teachers across the district, and again, shared positions in music for Mr. Bon Simino at the elementary, and Mr. Belinchette, and Mr. Chalata at the middle and high school, so you have some decimal representations there. And health, if you notice, there's no health at the high school. Health is embedded within the PE curriculum, and they, they have separate classes where that's offered at the high school. Health is a designated teacher, two teachers at the middle school per requirements. Non-certified system summary, this just shows you all of our support staff. Our support staff is, those are tutors. Our classified staff are office professionals, paraprofessionals, custodians, and maintainers, and nurses. Technologies are a dynamic, outstanding team led by Kevin Ross, and of course, Mark Alfano, and Dan, and Derek, and John, all the, all the great guys, and Carol Zetegren up in technology who keep the district and the town running at a top level in technology. Other, if you're wondering who they are, that's Steve Bustle, Scott Martin, Lynn Davis, and Sue Bradley, who do tremendous, tremendous work, and they have too many titles to really classify, so you just call them other. Special, Special Lynn and Sue, they just do everything. Steve and Scott are more specialized. All right, so my, one of my final slides here. Reductions in staff from last year. The next slide. See, I was complimenting so much, he lost a clicker. I'm just kidding. This, this just shows you last year. You know, every year, as I said, it takes a steady look at what we have and what we need and what we can get, get by with at a sufficient level to meet the needs of our students. Dr. Brummett and the administrative team in the schools do a tremendous job of weighing that into the recommendations that are made to you every year. So I'd like to thank you as the Board of Ed. You're really a very important group, and I know there's a lot of pressure on you tonight. Hiring and retaining the best administrators, teachers, and staff is at the core of everything positive that happens for our children in the district. Staffing is a very important, has a very, excuse me, a very important impact on budget. Dr. Brummett understands very clearly that every position represents a person hired with hopes to make their career of helping Plainville students. Staffing decisions and reductions are held as a last line of action because we hire carefully, very carefully, and work hard to improve and get the best performance from all of our staff. On behalf of our schools, thank you for your interest in maintaining reasonable class sizes that support positive and responsive learning environments for all of our students. With that, that was as brief as I could do, I'm sorry. It's a lot of line numbers.
That's good for you.
Thank you. I'll take it.
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Lapage.
Yes, what can I?
It was just interesting to notice a couple of the testimonials were people that were newer to the town of Plainville that moved to the town. Have you, in your experience, ever talked to people who moved to the town, brought their kids into the system, asked them why they moved to the town, and was it the school district? Was that one of the determining factors?
Almost always.
That's awesome. I'd love to hear that.
Almost always. And I deal with multiple cases every week where, you know, they're doing whatever they can to move to this town. I had a family, well, I won't go into the details because it's confidential information, but they moved from far away, and they were doing, they weren't living in this town, but they're, they said, this is their goal to be in this town, and they wanted to come to school here, but I couldn't allow that until they're actually in town. But it's, it's just amazing that, you know, from thousands of miles away, we have a reputation of being a really dynamic school that offers so much, and that's because of the work that you do and all the, all the administrators and teachers in the district, but.
So is there something in general that stands out that people see? Are they looking at statistics?
I think it's balanced. I really do. I think it's balance of having so much that we offer. You know, I live in a nearby town that, you know, can be a competitor in so many ways and will get, but I'll honestly say, we don't have the balance that we have here. We don't have the strength in the arts and the music and a lot of the programs we offer here, and that's true of a lot of towns. It's true of affluent towns. I just think that this town does a great job of, you know, fighting for what our students need and preserving that, protecting that, and I think families honor that, and it does great things for, for the home values here and for, for the community as a whole. And it's not just the schools, we have a really, we have a really strong town, town structure that does a great job of, you know, providing resources and benefits to the town. Any other questions at all?
One more question.
Yeah, absolutely.
In this budget, of course, we had to make some sacrifices. We did slash some positions, and as Principal Guarino brought up in his situation with the middle school, there are people that have not been replaced, they've retired or left and just haven't been filled. How do you think that's going to impact, you know, our students if that demographic changes as far as population?
Well, it's, it's something we have to monitor very carefully. Dr. Brummett will share some slides regarding, you know, people that are actually losing a job versus people that are, you know, we're losing, we're reducing through attrition when they retire, and you just don't replace it. But every, every position has a cost because, you know, as I said at the beginning of the report, we don't just hire to, you know, to fill numbers. We really look carefully, and the administrators look really carefully at, do we really need this position? Can we do without it? But every loss has an impact. As you heard from a lot of the citizens tonight, you know, sharing their, their feedback about some potential losses or some potential considerations that they're worried about not getting. You know, every, every decision's a big one. Unfortunately, it makes your job harder, but.
Well, I just want to thank you because the reminder that every number, we look at these dry statistics, but every number is a person. It's a human being that has a family, has to support a family.
Right.
And it's with what we have right now, the greatness of our school district and the town, the all-day pre-K, I don't want to see those programs affected. I don't want to see us go on a downside, so it's really important that we maintain what we have.
Thanks, we appreciate that.
Stay, take the line, stand on line and support the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Lapage.
Thank you, Mr. Lapage. Excellent job.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead, Becky.
We cut her off. We got, we got kind of, so I couldn't help but notice that 31 of maybe 76 or 78 magnet school students came from pre-K, K, and first. So I know what, so you see what happens, is people don't know what we are, don't know what we have, go out of town, and then they all, they usually do come back.
They do. Most of the time, they do.
I just, and I don't know, you know, what there is for a solution for that. I don't know how we can, if there's any way of marketing ourselves better.
Well, I can say that we've always tried to do that, at least I know at the high school level, but I will pat on the back to Roberto and the high school team taking a different approach this year because, you know, it's really, really outwardly, you know, the magnet schools basically recruit. They want students to go there, so they promote heavily. They have a much larger marketing budget than certainly we do. But I attended the, the, I won't call it a presentation, it was more of a performance at the middle school. The high school went down and, and, you know, Mr. St. Lawrence's videos played, as well as the jazz band performed, and students spoke on a panel, really heartfelt about, and one was from a magnet school who had come back, and it was just by coincidence, but it was really powerful. I'd say they did a great job. I know tomorrow night's the curriculum, I always held the curriculum showcase in the fall. It's going to be held here tomorrow night, I believe, Dr. Brummett.
Yes, that's correct.
So, and I believe as our programs continue to get better, we have more to offer and more, more to provide than the magnet schools, you know, they had some pretty big budgets and, and, but when people, usually when students go there and experience it, they want to come back. I saw it happen time and time again as a principal, and I think that'll continue to be the case. We'd like to keep them here, and that was the message that was shared from the high school group, the students, the administrators, the staff who went there. We want to keep, we want you here. And if it's something that you want to go to a magnet school that we can't provide, then we're not going to stop you, and we'll help you to get there, but we believe we have what, what you need in Plainville, and we're going to do our best to provide that for you, so. I think the more we get that message out, the less students will leave us.
I would add that I believe magnet schools are going to start charging parents next year for preschool, which previously they did not, and I know they're going to charge more than we do. So I think that will probably discourage some parents from seeking out-of-district placements because they can get a better opportunity here, more reasonable. because they can get a better opportunity here at more reasonable cost. So we'll have to watch that one pretty carefully because that's a change for next year.
Yeah.
And I think that could curb those early grade reliance on magnet schools.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. LaPage.
Sorry for making you run back.
All right, I'm going to go to the podium to do a quick budget recap. I want to start by saying once again, thank you to the families and parents that came out tonight to endorse what they feel is very important about our budget. I give you all the credit for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here this evening and advocate on behalf of your children. So I really respect that and I appreciate your efforts. So this was a tough budget year to say the least. On the first slide, under budget, Kevin's still working on that. I'll go back one more slide to this, to this rings. Everything that will be endorsed in the budget comes back to the rings and all of the important core values under students' teaching and learning. All of them are deeply embedded in our vision statement and that's why anything I put forward in the budget is meant to support that. On the next slide, I do want to review what we did have to reduce. I knew coming into the budget season this year that the insurance was going to be a very significant increase. Ironically, it was even more of an increase than I could have imagined. Coming out of the gate, working with all the administrators, I asked them to prioritize what they felt they still needed versus what they could do without, especially if they wanted to add any positions, they had to be willing to offset that with a reduction. I, I will say this, that any of the reductions listed there are still going to allow us to have a very appropriate and reasonably class sizes for children and still support our core values under students' teaching and learning. To all the parents that, this evening that came out to support or to ask us to reconsider the wellness reduction, I do want to be clear that wellness will not go away completely. Every day, the children who have specials, and they have specials every day, they will still get an extra 20 minutes added on to the end of that special with, that will include wellness. Admittedly, these children will not get another period of wellness that would happen later in the day or before or after the special. That is the part that will be lost because of those reductions in three tutors and a para. The rest of this, we all spoke to administrators and we felt we could live without these positions, though all of them have an impact. On the next slide, you can see what we hope to still enhance within the district in spite of some of these offsets. We do feel we're, we still want to continue our full day, full week preschool. However, because of rising costs, we will be raising our fees for next year. You've heard quite a bit tonight about the school resource officer. We were able to afford that by offsetting that with technology offsets that the town provides as well as a reduction in a tech ed teacher. We still will be able to provide all the courses that we need to provide in tech ed, just fewer sections. We have asked for an additional math teacher to support the new college prep math program at the high school as well as, starting with this year's freshmen, all children need four years of math. So we need to make sure we have enough math sections with appropriate staffing to promote that. We're going to add a Go Kid Go program this year, which will be totally grant funded and that's going to be a sister program to our Go Kid, our Go Baby Go program where we modify cars for disabled youngsters. This will actually help some of our older kids who are in wheelchairs that might need some modifications. And that's the brainchild of Leanne Gomindal and Sue Bradley and Lynn Davis. You've heard a lot tonight about the indoor track team and all the parent support for that. That has been offset by reductions in Mr. Farrell's lines so that there is no increase to his budget to afford that program. On the next slide, I want to show the board and, and the public that's here tonight that there are people that, you know, have lost their positions as a result of this budget. We try to do as much of it through attrition, but in a tough year, we had to look at reducing about $386,000 worth of positions. Some we were able to do through attrition, but many we did have to do through job losses. So I wanted to make sure the board and the public is aware of that. And to a certain extent, when you do have folks that lose a position, you have the potential for folks to file unemployment claims. So that could offset some of these realized savings. But, you know, this is what the picture looks like at this time. In the next slide, I want to show you that the Board of Ed has been very hard at work over the past three weeks looking at the budget. When I first made a proposal back, feels like a million years ago, but about four weeks ago, we came in at 1.99%. Then on our very first Budget Board Work section, we looked at class sizes at Linden and felt we could reduce one teacher there and still have reasonable class sizes. That's a first grade teacher and, and I believe that's appropriate. We are still going to run our ramp program this summer, but we're going to reduce it to four days a week. So that'll cut back on busing and staffing costs. We're going to cut back on our summer special ed program simply by cutting back one week. That'll reduce some staffing costs and we reduce some of our central office dues. That brought us down to, at the end of the January 24th budget session, to a 1.79% increase, not including health insurance. We also looked at the February 8th session where we looked at additional reductions. We found that we had not given us, ourselves enough credit for the correct offsets. So that brought us down to another $35,000. We revisited the workers' comp line and felt that that could be reduced further after some updates from our brokers. We looked carefully at our printing costs and felt we could reduce that some more. We are going to get rid of a high color capacity copier at the central office and share one with the town as a shared service model, which will save us about $6,000. And our phone system that's getting revamped as we speak is going to result in lower costs to our monthly phone bills. And the more we looked at it, we thought we could reduce that further. So all of these reductions over those nights of board budget work sessions brings us down to a 1.57% increase before health insurance. On the next slide, I want to just, you know, it, it bears restating again that this year's health insurance increases were unprecedented. On a typical year, we have maybe eight staff members who will have claims larger than $75,000. This year, we had over 21 staff members who fell into that category, some much more than $75,000. And it created not only a deficit this year, which had to be backfilled by the town allocating some of the unassigned fund balance, but it created a situation for next year with, that we had to reconfigure how much money we set aside for health insurance. On the next slide, you will see that as you looked at all of our progressions through the budget, health insurance is a huge line item. Just to put it in perspective, this year, based on the experiences that I discussed in previous slides, we have to allocate $1.3 million for health insurance. Last year, we had to allocate $220,000 for health insurance. So it's an astronomical increase based largely on those folks that have just had unfortunate healthcare crisis that are very expensive to treat. And of course, they're entitled to that. So in spite of our due diligence with having a 1.57% increase with, when you add the health insurance to that, it becomes a 5.31% increase. And that increase is about half of really what our brokers are recommending, but we are looking also into other healthcare options that might allow us to do some cost savings down the road. So just for the board's deliberations this evening, this is option A of the budget and this includes the math teacher, the track and field, indoor track and field and the SRO. So those three positions are in this budget at a 5.31% increase. On the next slide, which we'll call option B, we have removed the SRO and left in the math teacher and the track. And that promotes a 1.43 operating budget increase. Health insurance line doesn't change and that's a 5.1, 5.17% budget increase. And on the last slide, which is option C, we have the math teacher in, the track out and the SRO out. And I will say the board had already decided at our last budget session that the math teacher should stay in because that was something that we were defending to offer those courses. But under this option, the track, indoor track and the SRO are out. That gives us a 1.39% budget increase on the operating side and a 5.13% when you include insurance. And it's important too for the board and the community to know that these are, the operating component of this budget are some of the lowest increases we've seen in the past six or seven years. It's really the health insurance that creates this tremendous shortfall this year, a tremendous need to increase the budget at unprecedented levels. You know, a lot of folks this evening put forth strong support for wellness. We hadn't come prepared tonight to offer alternatives there, but I believe on a slide, is there a slide after that, Sam? Put two slides after that. Let me do this first. The budget reconciliation is simply showing everybody that the increase to salaries are modest this year. We've actually reduced in the professional services area. We've reduced utilities thanks to all the energy ad savings that we've done over the years. But again, if you look at those three options, the clear cause of the budget, significant budget increase this year is the health insurance. Whether you go with option A, B or C, you're still looking at a greater than 5% budget increase this year, which is obviously a number we haven't seen in this community in quite some time. And the next slide is just encouraging everyone to support their public schools because as some of our community members have said this evening, a solid school district is good for property values. It's good for a democratic society overall. In, in response to some of our parents this evening, we did create a slide at the very end there. After questions. Is, this includes some of the options with SRO and indoor track. If wellness were to be put back into the budget, that's a $96,000, almost $100,000 budget line item and that would result in another .27 increase to the budget. So, you know, in response to parents' voice tonight, I wanted to put that out there for the board. We may need more time to discuss that, but that is, that is the impact of putting wellness back into the budget. It is a $100,000 program. So at this point, I will turn this back over to the Board of Ed Chair Saunders to carry through the meeting, although I'm happy to answer any questions.
May I have a question? I'm just very confused with the wellness program. Is it partially being reduced or totally being reduced?
Partially. It, it will still be offered as an, as we have extended specials periods by 20 minutes at every elementary school. And that's been part of the wellness program since its inception. And at the end of a special period, the kids get about 15 to 20 minutes of physical activity. That's part one of wellness. What will not continue next year is the tutors would then run activities throughout the day, taking kids from class, doing a physical activity. And that's another break that they had during the middle of the day. In some schools, it was added on to recess and other schools, it was added into the middle of the day. That would go away because that required extra staffing.
So it was one additional session that the paras would take them out?
Correct.
For exercise for, what, 20 minutes?
About 20 minutes, either indoors or outdoors, depending on how it was run that day. But that would not be offered next year with this reduction.
So with the reduction, they'll, they'll have something in the morning, they'll have recess and they'll just miss, be missing the afternoon, correct?
Well, might not, yeah, it might, the time of day varied at each school, but nevertheless, you're accurate in that they would have recess and a one wellness break. They just wouldn't have the second wellness break.
Exactly. I'm under the impression that the, the parents that spoke were under the impression, it seemed to me that it was totally being replaced or reduced. That was going to be nothing. That, that seemed to be my, what I got from that implication. Do you think that's their perception that it's totally being removed or?
You know, I talked to Mrs. Legoy, I don't know if she's still here, and she indicated that the Tafalon parents were aware that it would be still partially intact, but they still felt very strongly about that. That's my understanding of the Tafalon folks and probably our Linden parent that was here earlier. They knew that there would be some maintenance of it, but not to the level that it is right now.
Right. Well, just keep up that communication because I don't want them going around saying it's totally, you know, let's be honest, if it's being eliminated, tell the truth. I mean, not saying you, but the parents. I don't want them saying, oh, it's being totally eliminated, we won't have anything. And that's the message that's being sent.
You know, yeah, it's hard for me to know whether that's true. I, what I plan to do though is after tonight's session is to go to all the PTOs as well as all the faculty meetings to make sure everyone has a clear understanding of what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, so that everyone is operating under the correct information.
Thank you.
Sure.
Quick question. Does this impact at all Makerspace?
It does not. Makerspace would still run as a separate period that each elementary school sets aside.
Good, okay.
Anyone else?
Sure. Hypothetically speaking, if we were not to give you a new math teacher, what would then happen? Would you have to take away an elective or how would you do that?
If we do not get that new math position, we would not be able to run that college prep math course that the board heard about last month. And I will be back again next year asking for a math teacher because current freshmen need to take four years of math. So by the time they get to their senior year, I have to have another math teacher to offer that. So it's not a need that's going to go away.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brum.
Very good.
Thank you, Dr. Brum.
Excellent, thank you.
Go, go forward.
I had a question, but it went out of my head, but I'll think of it.
I'll be over there if you need me.
Yeah. You're not going far, right? You're not running off.
We still have budget discussion later.
Yeah, I'll get there, I'll get there. Come back, the old brain.
All right, with no other questions, we'll move on to board subcommittee reports. Hey, Nate.
Hi, how are you? For athletics, boys swim has multiple swimmers who've qualified for states. That's good. I know the program's been growing in the past few years. I know a couple of my friends swam this year who haven't swam competitively before and are enjoying it. Girls' basketball has 10 wins and nine losses and qualified for the state tournament. So they'll be in the playoffs. I want to say they start within the next couple of weeks. Boys' basketball, the season's been rough, but the boys are continuing to fight hard and giving it their best at practice every day, which is important. Rustling is getting ready for the state championship meets coming up and cheerleading is having a great season. I don't know exactly which competitions they won, but I want to say they won at least two. Various competitions. For academics, semester one grades were finalized and report cards were sent out to students on February 5th. Semester two classes are now underway and students are adjusted to their new semester two schedules. Juniors will be taking the SAT on March 21st. Other news, the dodgeball tournament hosted by Project Grad is Thursday, February 15th at 6:00 in the Keagle Gym. Tomorrow, the high school is hosting an open house for the class of 2022 and their parents. This was previously called the curriculum showcase night, but now we're calling it the class of 2022 open house because it's truly about more than just the curriculums. It's about the extracurriculars and everything that we offer at the high school. The jazz band competed at the Berkeley Jazz Festival and placed third in their class out of 16 schools, which is pretty impressive considering schools from all around New England and as far away as Chicago attended this event. From March 15th to the 17th, there's going to be a play Marvin's Room performed by high school students. And the Winter Sports Award banquet is March 14th. Any questions?
Thank you, Nate.
No problem.
Okay, we didn't have facilities, no policy, no finance. Dr. Brum, did you have anything for the turf committee?
No, we have.
We have not met since the last board meeting.
Okay, thank you. The high school report, Mr. White?
Yes, the last PAC meeting was on January 10th. The treasurer reported a balance of $1,314.21. They also were going to be having a comedy night fundraiser on January 20th. At the same Mr. Meeting, Mr. Meddick presented some high school proposed course changes. Also went over some statistics currently with the high school, similar to what Mr. Guarino did with the middle school for us tonight. And the next meeting of the PAC will, is a tentative meeting scheduled for March 14th.
Thank you. All right, Tafalon.
I was unable to go to the last meeting, but I did get an update. The PTO discussed fundraising possibilities along with programming plans. The PTO planned for the upcoming Sweetheart Bingo Night on February 9th. Their book fair is scheduled for March 15th to 23rd. And they continue to collect box tops and they thank everyone who is sending them in for them.
Okay, thank you. Linden, Mrs. Hardy?
The Lolly Graham event for Valentine's Day was a big hit as usual. The Snowflakes Way family dance was a success with. The Snowflakes Way Family Dance was a success with many families in attendance. Elsa, Anna, and Olaf were there, as well as Lindy. Most of our scholars were dressed, dressed to impress, so lovely and handsome. The Kid Athlon is coming up Friday, the 23rd, in our annual exercise and obstacle course through the halls, a popular, popular, healthy event.
All right, thank you. The middle school, Crystal?
Yep, we met last Tuesday. We discussed that we're going to be announcing a talent show that will be starting sometime in March, so we'll be announcing that soon. We had a successful family winter bingo night. It was a lot of fun. We had a great turnout, and we are just about done. We're getting ready to hand out our Valentine carnations that we sold. We did much better than we thought, and we're looking forward to handing those out on Wednesday. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 13th.
Thank you. Okay, Wheeler. So, last Thursday night, they had a Valentine's Day bingo, and apparently had the best turnout they've ever had. Currently, right now, Wheeler's Jump Rope for Heart campaign, led by their PE teacher, Mr. Turcot, has raised over $5,000 for the American Heart Association. And this week, their culminating event is on Valentine's Day, where they'll have special classes, and the students will be doing the actual jump roping. And the next PTO meeting for Wheeler is February 21st, 6:00 PM, in the library. All right, Craig Council, Mrs. Tyrell?
So, the Craig Council did not meet in January because of the snow. That was actually the day we were supposed to meet, was that big snowstorm. However, there are a few things going on at the Craig Council. There is a Legislative Breakfast Craig sponsors that this coming week, I believe. Yes, 15, Thursday, Thursday, the 15th?
It's Thursday, the 15th.
Yeah, it's Thursday. And also, there will be some, there are actually a session, there's four sessions of meetings that Craig is sponsoring about magnet funding. We talked about magnet schools a little bit, and that we don't want to lose our students to magnet schools. However, the magnet schools in Hartford are, are there for a reason. They are really state mandated magnets that can only function if they have the right configuration of, they have to be racially balanced in order to meet the needs of the chef decision. So, there are issues going on at the magnet schools where, as if, this should surprise you that the state is not funding them to the degree at which they were supposed to, which is a big surprise there. And it's making it so that all the, all the kids that do go to magnet schools, the tuition is increasing and has been over, you know, has been gradually increasing, but is now at sort of a critical place. So, these four meetings that they're having, March, I think it's like 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th, something like that, Maureen?
The one in Hartford's on March 6th.
Yep. So, they'll be having these four meetings, they're trying to get people to come, board members, you know, I'll be, I'll be going, I know I think Maureen's planning on going as well. Just to listen to what's, what's going on with this, the history, and the fact that there needs to be some advocacy, because the magnet schools are going to exist, they are going to attract students from the suburbs, and what we need to do is make sure that they continue to be funded appropriately by the state. So, that is something that we will, you know, have to follow on, and we should lend our voices to that because we're impacted by it as well. So, that's that.
Thank you. Another Chair's report. I just wanted to, we had a lot of private donations this month, and in a time where we have a lot of budget constraints, let's see, the Elizabeth Harding Norton Trust, they gave $1,200 to the STEM program at Tafelon. The PH Robotics got $1,050 in donations from like OK Industries, Gameco, the Plainville Fire Company, the Connecticut Lighting Company, and Lola's Bistro. So, that altogether was $1,050. And then the Family Fun Fest, which is at the high school, I believe, it's at the high school now, or was it at, no, wait, it was at Lyndon now.
They moved it to Lyndon.
It's at Lyndon.
May 19th.
Yeah, they got a total of $1,950 in grants towards that. So, I just want to say thank you because all the money that anybody donates is greatly appreciated. All right, new business, Board Open Forum. Does anyone have anything they wish to say? Hopefully not budget-related yet. Sorry, just throwing that out there. Anybody?
Sure.
Go ahead, Becky.
Just a thank you to Chief Catania for coming out and explaining a little bit more about the SRO, and also to our community members who came out and expressed all kinds of things. And just to say that, at this point in the budget, this is, this is really the end of our budget process for the moment. You know, we pass our budget on to the council, and then on, it goes from there to the voters. It's hard to make, it's hard to make big changes at this moment in time, but it doesn't mean that things can't be adjusted down the road. And just, also, just to say, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to Washington DC last week, I believe, and with CAE, in a lobbying effort for our, with actually CAE folks and NSBA folks from around the country. It's called the Advocacy, I don't know, Advocacy, somebody help me out. What am I thinking of here?
Just make something up we don't know.
It's like an advocacy conference. Let's put it that way. There you go, okay. It's like an advocacy, advocacy conference, and we do go and talk about the issues that are going on federally. We went on the Hill, we lobbied with mostly legislative aides about things like IDEA funding for special education grant, Title I and Title II, funding for our school districts. And we talked about a large, a large, you know, vast kind of ideas that are going on nationally in education. So, I was fortunate enough to be able to do that as CAE's federal advocacy chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak out. I'd like to, Mr. LaPage mentioned balance here in the district, and I just want to, I'm grateful for the balance here in this district. My son, Christopher, has this one-track line of videos, making videos, and I'm glad that he, it belongs to other clubs here at the high school. We had the opportunity two weeks ago to go to the National Ocean Sciences Bowl. He's part of a group with Mr. Fusco and, what's her name, Sherre Hathaway. Yes, it's Hathaway. A great group. There were five kids who, they competed against 16 other schools. They're round robin. When they started out, they won two out of three matches. It was so exciting, and they did a great job. And it's just a lot of fun seeing the kids all excited, having fun, and all this stuff that they've learned. And then this past week, I had the opportunity to go to Berkeley, the Berkeley High School Jazz Festival, and got to hear a bunch of other schools play, and then we also heard Plainville play. And I thought they were awesome. I play the French horn myself, and so it was kind of fun to hear the other schools and then hear our school. And I wasn't just a mom thinking we were awesome, but they did a great job, and I'm just proud to say that I belong to this district.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a comment also. It occurred to me, as we recognize the everyday hero, that there are so many people behind the scenes, whether volunteers, teachers, specialists, that touch kids in so many ways, have impact on their lives, truly mentors, and even more confidants. So, it's, it's really good that we do recognize these people, and it's good for me just to see that, because I don't say, I'm not really involved in the district itself, just as a board member, but it really helps me to put in focus what you guys do on a day-to-day basis, how much you mean to the kids, how much the kids love you. And I can see why people are so drawn to Plainville. So, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to move to the school calendars. Dr. Brahmet, you want to give us a brief overview before we?
Yes. We are going to look at changing the policy because we have gotten in the habit of starting before Labor Day, and the policy right now indicates if Labor Day comes early, we don't start till after Labor Day, but that's not really the case anymore. So, that's going to be revised. Basically, the three calendars, we're going to look at all three years, next year, the year after, and the following year. I think it's important to kind of move forward three years because families actually do plan that far ahead. And we want to look at starting school as early as possible, so, you know, most years you'll notice the first day of school does happen before Labor Day. But other than that, there aren't any substantive, substantial changes to any of these calendars, so there's nothing to really draw the board's attention to. We're still going to have a shortened February break, April break, where it typically runs. And the correct calendar that was talked about years ago is no longer in force, but because none of the districts ever really jumped in and did it wholeheartedly, so we haven't had to follow that, though this, these calendars are more or less in sync with what was recommended several years back. So, unless there's any questions, there shouldn't be any substantial changes to any of these calendars, other than our plans to change board policy in response to the fact that we do start school before Labor Day most years now, and the shortened February break.
All right. So, I just need a motion.
Do you need a motion to approve the calendar?
Yeah, for, yeah, for first reading, and then we'll, then we need a motion to postpone it.
So, I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. No, I don't take a vote, and I just ask people, and now I need a motion to postpone it till next month.
Make motion to postpone it till next month.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, now to what you've all been waiting for. All right, so next we have the approval of the 2018-19 school budget. We have three scenarios that Dr. Brahmet had laid out to us. Obviously, anything's on the table at this point, but we can start the discussion by getting a motion.
I would think that'd be proper, so what I would like to move is I move that the board adopt Item A of the operating budget as presented by this superintendent and his support staff.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Just before we do any discussion, Joan asked me to make sure we're going to do a roll call, so when we vote, we're going to, you can vote, I'm going to call you, we're each going to vote separately, so. All right, is there any discussion? And everybody understands, this is the budget that includes the math teacher, the SRO, and the track team. Indoor track team, excuse me. Anybody? Any discussion? Or do you want to just go right to the vote?
I don't know. Do we have discussion?
I'm sorry?
Does anyone want to discuss?
I'm sorry, no discussion, nobody.
I thought of the question that I had to ask, which really isn't quite relevant to exactly this component, but it is a question related to the, related to the wellness program. So, maybe I'll just ask, for my clarification at this point.
Go ahead.
I mean, might as well. There was, there was, the conversation around the wellness program that we had here, there was quite a bit of mention, at least I thought in my mind, that there was another component to it, like an educational component, that people felt was going away. So, do we feel that that is also the way, is there something to that that's?
No, I think that the part that will remain, where the specialist teachers will spend that extra 15 to 20 minutes at the end of the specials, any games that they teach the children are, have rules and have, you know, parameters, and I think that will still remain. I'm not aware that there's a lot of discussion, other than in PE class, of actual healthy eating habits as part of wellness. Really, it's a lot of movement. I don't know that our wellness tutors spent a lot of time on that. Certainly, our PE teachers do, and that carries through once the kids get to middle school and get into health class and beyond. So, I would suggest that, yes, there would still be parameters about how to be a good team player, how to get along, and how to, you know, do what you need to do to be a good participant in an activity. That would not change.
All right. Come on, we had lively discussion last week. People have to have opinions about this before we vote on it.
Well, I'm in, I, I'm in favor of, you know, Motion A. Obviously, I seconded it, but.
Well, naturally, since I proposed it, I'm in favor of it, and I think that the two items that were in somewhat contention last Thursday, I think were very adequately addressed this evening by both Chief Catania and also by the Athletic Director, and also a number of parents and students who spoke in favor of it. And I think both of these issues are really going back to the basic three Rs that we have been, you know, very familiar with over the years of just reevaluating what we're doing, reallocating assets as is appropriate, and then reinvesting those assets into new programs that were not really, in effect, adding anything. I think what we're doing is we're taking funds that have been allocated in one resource, and our professional staff has evaluated the value of where the needs are, and has recommended that we make those three changes, where we do have to offer that algebra course so that our students will be prepared for college, and also that the students coming in will have the required math courses available to them. And so that I think that this is something that's incumbent upon us to adopt and put forward, and hopefully that the council will see the wisdom of our deliberations and go along with it on this. So, I would sincerely hope that we could, we could endorse this as, as a Board of Education.
All right. Anyone else?
Yep, I would say that I am in favor of Proposal C. I am not against an indoor track team, and I am not against an SRO. I think that they are good ideas. I don't think that this is the right time to implement them. We are basically in a budget crisis, and every dollar and penny counts. And I think we do need the math teacher, but I don't think that right now's the time to do an SRO or an indoor track team.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm personally supporting Option C, and I thought it was interesting that the very last parent that came up to speak mentioned that, that's not verbatim, that she thought it would be incredulous to support having indoor track and SRO while eliminating positions, teachers, people. And it's not the money because it's miniscule. It's a difference of, I don't know, 5.3 to 5.1, 5.1, whatever it is, it's miniscule. It's just, for me, it's just a principle. I just can't personally support, I mean, the cuts are made, but I just can't add SRO and an indoor track and look someone in the eye and say, "You don't have a job," to four different people, as well as not filling positions. So, that's just how I feel. That's my, that's my position.
Neither the positions that are being eliminated have any impact at all on, on the justification for either the SRO or the addition of the sports. As the Athletic Director very capably pointed out, that the funding for that is made available because they, again, reevaluated, they were, reevaluated what they were doing, and they decided that they would not be able to have some scrimmages for some of the teams, that they were not going to do uniforms for the year, and provided the funding there. Also, as far as the SRO, they're taking and just taking the funds that were going to be going from technical education and just allocating that towards the cost of the SRO. And I think the chief adequately displayed to us the benefit of having this and the benefit that is in all the surrounding towns that have an SRO. And so, we're not, we're not sacrificing someone's job to support these, either of these two endeavors. And I think that for the betterment of the school district, we need to adopt Budget Day.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just one more comment on that. When Principal Guarino went through his presentation, I meant to comment on it, but he kind of walked away from the podium. I noticed a decrease, great decrease, in the number of behavioral problems, and that was due to their efforts. We talked, I talked about how close-knit this community is, the district is, how teachers, coaches, counselors, mentors, they're all involved with the children, and that's really reflects the success in the, in the reduction, in the intervention. That's truly the rem, that's truly what the school needs. SRO, like Nicole said, I don't, I'm not against it. I would like to have it sometime in the future. I just think we're, we're just, it's a very bad time, and I think the school's doing great in what they're doing and keeping behaviors under control. in what they're doing and keeping behaviors under control and intervention and trying to be proactive and bringing a very responsible school district body. So that's just how I feel.
I would also like to add that because of the budget situation that we're in, we're not in a position to just break even. We need to decrease costs and just because we took something out doesn't mean that we should put something back into the budget. Our job is to give the kids what they need and keep the taxpayers in our thoughts as well. We're here to represent both of them and I think that giving them the teacher is what the children need and the children don't necessarily need the other two right now.
Okay, anybody else that hasn't spoken?
Yes, I too will support item C, which is the math teacher only. I think at this time of instability, that we don't know where we're going, what, what monies more will be cut from us, and I think that the education that we have is a very good system. I think that we've given our children quite a bit in the last six years that I've been on the board. I don't think that they lack a lot of things. I know that there are a lot of wants and needs and we all have those, but we have to stop to think, what can we do at this time when the monies are not stable for us? So I have to support C.
Okay, any of you three ladies?
I support C as well, for all the reasons we've heard.
I support, I support item A. Just we had so many parents come in talking about the indoor track and I, I know how, I mean, I know how important it is for kids to have things to do. And I just feel that the indoor track is really important. I mean, it's, it's not really a huge increase. He did go through, I mean, he told us that in his budget, the line items. I just support item A and the indoor track especially.
I support item A. I look at the math teacher, the indoor track, the SRO as something that's going to impact 100% of the children and we need to think about 100% of the children.
All right, thank you. You know, I, I kind of look at it the same way as, as some of my colleagues. We, you can say that the impact of laying off teachers does not impact the things we add, which is to me not the case. We lost $1,008 in ECS this year, where the council only asked us to absorb $220,000 out of our current budget, which was extremely generous. I know other towns have had to absorb a lot more than that. We have a proposed, we already know we're being cut for next year and now there's an additional proposed cut from the budget, from the governor. We know that 3.7% of any budget we put forth is just insurance and we, this is what was, we had a group meeting last week and this is what the insurance consultants that the town hires has told us, this is what we need to do. None of us want to do it, none of us want to cut a dollar, but the fact of the matter is people have lost their jobs, we're at a negative eight positions and that is a fact. So to add new programs that aren't needed, the math teacher is needed to, as Dr. Brahman said, meet some curriculum standards for freshmen this year who now need another math. I think our kids need math, we have STEAM, we have STEM, obviously that's a focus that we care about. We also have a lot of other things in our district that no one wants to talk about or no one wants to acknowledge, but we have Chromebooks, one-to-one computing down to the fifth grade and then the other grades have them available in the classroom. We have a STEAM lab at the, at the middle school. We have a STEM lab at the high school. I don't know that every other district around us has all of those things. We have all-day pre-K, so we have a lot of other offerings that other towns do not have. By not, I, I don't think it's fair of us to go to the council with any budget that asks for things that we don't need. I believe Dr. Brahman has went back over and over in the budget and taken out things that she said were very hard. And she did that knowing that this is the things that we have to do. The three Rs don't work this year. They've worked in the past years, they don't. We need to look at what we need and not take any more than that. So I'm going, I'm not going to be supporting A as well. All right, so we'll just go down the road. Nicole?
Um.
How do you vote?
The proposed budget, C.
Can I?
No, 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 the motion was for A. So you have to vote on A. Whether you approve or whether you are in favor or not in favor of A.
Not in favor.
I'm sorry, Becky, you wanted to say something before she voted?
No, that's okay, it's all right.
Mike?
Not in favor.
Becky?
Favor.
Foster?
In favor.
Deb?
Not in favor.
Lori?
Not in favor.
Crystal?
In favor.
Kathy?
In favor.
And I will be voting no as well. So the motion failed. So can we get another motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion for proposal B.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
I second the motion to accept item B.
All right, do we, do we have any discussion? Becky?
I understand that we're having a budget crisis, I understand all of this, but I have to tell you, we are setting ourselves in a very dangerous precedent. We have for five years told our staff that if they find a way to make good things happen for kids, that we will let them work things out within their budgets and propose something that is an improvement. This specific item is just that. This is not an increased cost within the budget. This was, this was money that the athletic director worked on, found a way to pay for this program. We know there's a lot of kids who will use this program. I implore you to pass this budget with this program.
We had a number of people here tonight. Personally, I am not really happy with just doing this, but it's, it's better than nothing, so to speak. But we did have a number of students that are now being denied the ability to participate in a sport that will really benefit them. There were at least, I believe, 50 students right now who would like to participate in indoor track, who cannot do it and only three students can. And those three athletes that are, one of those is a superior athlete, another one is very good, both of them have qualified for state tournaments. And I think that is a definite positive aspect to our education program. And, and I think the least we can do, because there is absolutely no cost to this program. It does not cost the budget one bloody cent. The funds have been allocated for other reasons and have been diverted from that to, to provide this necessary outlet for our students. And I think it would be shortsighted not to, not to at least add this to our deliberations and we should be, we should be approving item B.
Anyone else?
I'll just add one more thing and this is something I said the other night. There are many, many people in this town who will advocate for tax cuts. You will get taxpayers, you will get taxpayer groups, you will get the town council, you will get a lot of people who will advocate for tax cuts. This body is one of perhaps the only places where you will get somebody who will advocate for an increase, okay? So this is, this is, at the end of the day, a $14,000 expense and it's miniscule, the amount of money that it will reduce in our budget. It will provide something that's much more valuable for our kids and I, and I really think we should support it.
Anyone else?
Again, I'll say I can't support adding anything that isn't necessary for the children's education.
Okay.
Bloody man, you're not adding one cent.
Foster, let her speak.
When we are laying, or hiring teachers.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken? We can kind of move this along, it's getting late.
I am not in favor.
Um, you know, we got a letter a couple of weeks ago that Dr. Brahman sent out from a middle school parent who's very upset because we're not replacing a special ed teacher. Was that correct? It was a special ed teacher?
It was.
I can't, I'm sorry, this has nothing to do with money. You're right, it's a very miniscule amount, which is why I pointed out, in 10 years, no one's once, since I've been on the board, has advocated to have this put back in the budget. But I can't tell, I can't justify to a parent who's upset that they think their special needs child is going to get less service because we're not rehire, we're not hiring a middle school special ed teacher, but that we can go, you know, and hire a new track, you know, an indoor track coach and have an indoor track team. I can't justify that. And I'm sorry that you, you know, we all have our own opinions. This budget is not, you think it's easy for any of us to cut $1, it's absolutely not. This is just not the year to add things. We can certainly look at these things if things change better, but you know, you made a comment about five, you know, for the past five years, we've told our teachers things that we're going to do. Well, you know what? The past five years, the state has guaranteed us certain amounts of money that now they're reneging on. So we can't count on that as well. So it's, it's from both sides. It's not fair to say it's, you know, it's us not keeping up our promises. We promised to do the best we can with the money we have, with the situation that we have. The state has not kept up their end of keeping us, you know. When we, when we did open choice years ago, when, when we voted to have more choice kids and, and, and part of that was getting all day kindergarten, I remember asking Dr. Kitching at the time, what are we going to do if we ever get cut on that money? He said, that's not going to happen. Well, it did happen last year. So nothing is sacred anymore and to think that if we don't, it's not the end of the world, we can look at it at a later date. That's just my opinion, but. Anybody else? All right, we'll just move the vote then. Nicole, how do you vote for option B?
I'm not in favor.
Mike?
I do not support option B.
Becky?
In favor.
Foster?
Reluctantly in favor.
Deb?
I cannot support B.
Lori?
Cannot support it.
Um, Crystal?
In favor.
And Kathy?
In favor.
Okay, I also will not be supporting it. So that motion fails. Can we get one more motion?
Motion to implement budget C.
Second.
All right, do we have, have a first and a second? Any discussion? All right, move the motion then. Nicole, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Mike?
I'm in favor as well as for option C.
Becky?
Not in favor.
Foster?
I abstain.
Why are you abstaining?
I am abstaining.
Deb?
I have a right to abstain. I don't suppose you think that's un-American or I'm, I'm a traitor maybe? I don't know, but I am abstaining.
Deb?
In favor.
Uh, Lori?
In favor.
Crystal?
Not in favor.
Kathy?
Not in favor.
Um, so what is that? Four, one, two, three, four. Well, I'm in favor, so the motion passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, next we need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, lastly.
Do you want to adjourn?
Yeah, no, that's it.
Second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.